Welcome, everybody, to the Broomfield Auditorium. You have all the members of City Council up here, with the exception of Kevin Jacobs, who is in traffic and will be here at some point in time. And then Mayor Pro Tem Greg Stokes. And his reason for not being tonight is that he has an appointment that was 18 years in the making. His daughter has part of her graduation ceremonies tonight. And Council has its priorities in order, as all of us do, that it's right for him to be with his daughter. So, he's the Ward Four Rep. He will watch the film. We'll keep him apprised of it, because he truly cares about the discussions tonight as well. I think it's fair to say that in the last month or two, you know, Broomfield has entered the fracking discussion, the discussion of oil and gas drilling, in earnest. We've gotten several comments at City Council. We've gotten several emails. And from those that are Broomfield residents, I think it's safe to say that there's one common thing in every email: we all love Broomfield, we care about it, we want to keep it safe, we want to keep it good, you know, and we want to keep the feeling of Broomfield for future generations. And I can assure you that that's the history and the legacy that City Council's going to do. So, the purpose of tonight is to hear and document the concerns, the ideas that you have for Council as we go through our policymaking process. Right now, you know, we've got a couple emails. I'll make it very clear that the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is advisory to City Council, has made some recommendations. The City Council has not begun its process on the oil and gas drilling permits which were presented to us. That tonight is like the third session for City Council on evaluating what we want to do with the oil and gas permits that have been requested to us. Tonight is not about those oil and gas permits, it's about the process that City Council wants to go through. After tonight, in June sometime, I suspect, because I don't think we can do it before, City Council will have another study session, at which time we will have an earnest discussion on where we want to head with policy and how we want to address the concerns that are raised here tonight. So, we're here tonight, Council is to listen to you. We may ask questions as we ask you to clarify what you want us to do during our policymaking process. So, if you hear us ask questions, it's in that spirit. And let me just finish out. The next speaker's going to be our City and County Attorney, Bill Tudhill. And Broomfield, you know, we're a nation of laws, we're a city, we're a state of laws, and there's a lot of laws involved, oil and gas regulations. And whatever Broomfield does, it will be done within the laws that we're allowed to regulate or provide policy. With that statement, I will turn the microphone, or at least let Bill use his own microphone. This is our City and County Attorney, Bill Tudhill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to follow up by reaffirming what you indicated. Tonight is not a discussion about a particular oil and well drilling application. There are a number of those pending in front of City Council. They're currently scheduled to be heard in June. And those are subject to a quasi-judicial decision-making process. And the applicants in those cases are entitled to due process, which means that those decisions have to be based upon what is presented at the public hearing that has been duly noticed up to consider those particular applications. It's a little like a courtroom proceeding. The judge and the jurors are not entitled to go out and do independent research about the case or about the parties. They can't drive by the site of the accident or the crime. And they shouldn't be getting on the Internet and trying to do their own independent work. So, to the extent that some of the discussions tonight and the concerns tonight are prompted by those applications, we recognize that. We realize that some of the policy considerations, how far things ought to be set back from other uses, are items worth discussing and hearing about. But whether or not those particular applications should be approved is not appropriate for tonight's discussion. The second thing I'd like to mention is that City Council is ultimately tasked with trying to balance, not just City Council, but the state legislature as well and other regulatory agencies, two different types of property rights that are involved tonight. In Colorado, you can separate the surface property rights from the mineral estate underneath the ground. And in many areas in Colorado, that's exactly what happened. Both are determined to have equal rights to use their property. Somebody owns what's underneath the ground, somebody owns the ground at the top. And those are determined to be equal rights. A surface right owner cannot prevent a subsurface owner from using or accessing their property any more than a subsurface owner can say, "You can't develop above my minerals, because I don't want you to, it'll make it harder for me." And the task of trying to balance those is sometimes handled through surface use agreements, and sometimes it's handled through regulation. And so, I'll talk just a second about where regulation comes in to try to address these competing interests of equal but competing property rights. In the regulatory scheme, the Colorado Legislature has assigned primary responsibility for regulating oil and gas to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. At the same time, they've allocated to local governments the ability to control surface uses and engage in planning and regulation of land uses on the surface. These are two competing areas of delegated authority. And when they come into conflict, the courts have generally determined that local regulations are invalid if they conflict with the operation of the mission of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. And what's important to understand in the regulatory scheme is one of the missions of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is to maximize the effective rate of production of oil and gas. And so, they're interested in maximization. Local governments aren't necessarily interested in that. With that in mind, I can tell you that the Colorado Supreme Court has said flat-out that a local government cannot ban oil and gas drilling activity within its jurisdiction. Twenty years ago, the city of Greeley, their residents passed a referendum to ban oil and gas drilling activity within the city. And the Colorado Supreme Court said, and I'll quote from the decision, "We hold that the state's interest in efficient development and production of oil and gas preamps a home rule city from totally excluding all drilling operations within the city limits." Along these same lines, the Court of Appeals recently, just two weeks ago, in a case involving the town of Milligan invalidated an impact fee that had been imposed by the town of Milligan to conduct safety and security inspections on oil and gas operations within the town. And again, I will quote from what the court said, "Oil and gas well site safety and security are matters subject to rule, regulation, order, or permit conditions administered by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. And thus, we're not subject to the town's regulations." The questions of when a local regulation goes too far and interferes with the operational mission of the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission is not yet fully fleshed out. I think you're going to see more litigation on this. Certainly, the regulations and the ban in the town of Longmont are going to be first up for consideration. But it's within this regulatory framework of things that you can do and things that you may do and things that you can't do that we're being asked to consider policy decisions. So, that's the legal framework. And Mayor, that's all I have to say on it.
So, we have a facilitator here tonight that's going to help facilitate the discussion, Jonathan Barch.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor, and Council members for this opportunity and for you for attending this meeting. And my colleague Jeffrey, so I'm Jonathan Barch, and my job here tonight is to ensure that you all get a chance to provide time and provide input to the Council on the issues, the concerns that you have. And I may actually, in my role, ask you to help to clarify what some of those issues are. So, I know a number of you have already signed up to speak, and we're going to give preference to those Broomfield residents first, and then if time will come back to those afterwards. But we want to give preference to everybody, all the Broomfield residents, to provide input into the Council's decision-making, future policy decision-making. So, the purpose here, again, is that the Broomfield Council to understand your needs and concerns. We recognize that this is a difficult issue. There are a lot of different perspectives on this, strong feelings about this. And it's my belief that we can have a civil discussion about that. And to do that, we have a number of ground rules that I'm going to propose. One is that when you come up, although I'll call your name and also call the person that is on deck, so to speak, so the person that comes next, but I'd like you to state your name and your organization into the microphone, to be respectful of each other. And even if you disagree with the perspective of others. And so, what that means is no cheering, clapping, booing, and we're going to ask you to keep signs and other things outside. That this is a business meeting of the Council. The rules of the quorum for the Council apply here, and I believe that all of us can have a useful, productive, and civil discussion. We'd like you to be concise. I'm already looking at a number of pages of people that have signed up to speak. We don't have a specific hard time limit on terms of how much time you're going to have. A good rule of thumb is no more than three minutes. I'm going to ask you to be concise and respectful of others who also want to speak. And so, I'm going to maybe ask you to move on if, in fact, the time is used up and if other people have said something already, or if you have a document that you're going to read from. I want you to summarize that and to then submit that as part of and become part of this meeting record. The other piece is that I know that oil and gas production, there is a large, there are a lot of issues. And tonight, what we're really focused on is helping to support the Council's future policy decision-making. And if we can focus our discussions and our input tonight on that, that'll help the Council to really, to help to make and deliberate in their future discussion. So, how we got here? We got here by the Broomfield Planning and Zoning Commission had a series of public hearings on March 25th and April 8th regarding the proposals for new oil and gas wells on existing well pads in Broomfield. There were a number of you, many of you, I imagine, came to attend that and made comments and expressed concerns about that. On the 16th of April, the Council had a study session. And in that study session, they brought in some representatives from the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, or CDPHE, the Boulder County Attorney's Office, as well as representative from the Municipal League. On the 23rd of April of this year as well, to give you a timeline about this, the Council had another study session and engaged with sort of how to engage with the community and hear the needs and the concerns from you. And that tonight, where we sit tonight, is a result of that, a desire to hear from you about issues, concerns, and to do so in a respectful way. So, without further ado, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the first person to come to the microphone and also name the next person, too, that's going to come afterwards. Again, I'm going to ask you to be respectful of each other. I'll remind you, if necessary, to do so, that to be as concise as possible. Part of what that means is that if somebody said something already, what you can do is you can reiterate that and to highlight maybe something that's different that you would like to add, and really to be respectful of people's, other people's time and desire to participate. Okay? So, the first person on the list is Jackie Hooly, and I apologize if I don't get your, the pronunciation of your last name, well. So, we have two microphones on either end. You know, before you begin, Jackie, I'll just mention that the Council also, if there is a question about a clarification question or something that they would like to ask to clarify what the issues are, they may do so as well. So, Jackie, please.
Thank you.
And next on deck is Jevon Merkazin?
Merkarian.
Merkarian, sorry. It's hard for me to read that, I apologize. Please.
Hi, my name is Jackie Hool. I'm a mother of two young children, resident of Broomfield, and a member of our Broomfield. I would like to address my concerns regarding industry, regulation, and the effectiveness of the state of Colorado's use of fracfocus.org. Industry in the state are touting the disclosure regulation and the use of fracfocus as a huge win for the citizens of our state. While it is a step in the right direction, it is merely a Band-Aid on the gaping hole that is the cumulative lack of regulations. Fracfocus's stated intent is to provide the public access to reported chemicals used for hydraulic fracturing within their area. Harvard University was recently critical of fracfocus.org's effectiveness. According to the Denver Post, "The online database that Colorado employs for disclosing the ingredients in fracking fluids is seriously flawed," according to a Harvard Law School study. Researchers found that almost a third of the chemicals listed didn't exist. In Colorado, there is a requirement that by February 2013, the database would be searchable for regulators and the public. Nevertheless, fracfocus permits the viewing of only one well report at a time. A brief review of the site confirms the frustrating end-user experience. Well reports must be downloaded individually, and the reports are riddled with numerous mystery ingredients labeled as trade secrets. While I can look past the clunkiness of the site, as I know it will evolve and search functions will probably be enhanced, I cannot see how a voluntary, self-policed ingredient disclosure database that allows any number of trade-secret ingredients is enhancing oil and gas regulations in our state. This is not giving the citizens what we want to know, exactly what is being pumped into our ground, what is being chucked on our streets, next to our homes and our schools, and most importantly, what could affect our health. To protect public health and the environment, there must be strict and enforceable limits on drilling companies to claim proprietary status for their data in an effort to restrict access about chemicals used in fracking fluids. At a minimum, drillers must disclose the name of every specific chemical used in fracking fluids. It is unacceptable for drillers to use trade-secret claims to hide the chemicals that they are using. What this really comes down to is who has more rights, the corporation or the citizens exposed to this industrial activity? In essence, fracfocus allows the Colorado and the oil and gas industry to operate under the facade of requiring fracking ingredient disclosure without actually requiring full disclosure in a way that benefits the public. The state of Colorado's use of fracfocus has failed to bring greater transparency to the industry. Without this transparency, allowing this industrial operation in Broomfield exposes its citizens to unknown risks. Industry is moving full speed ahead, and Colorado's laws and regulations are falling woefully behind. I am asking that you, my local government, step up, protect myself, my family, my neighbors, and our town. Enact a moratorium in Broomfield. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Jackie. So, the thing, my colleague Jeffrey is going to try to capture some of the high-level pieces, and part of it is about concerns about particularly the chemicals, public health associated with that and disclosure, and that what you would like to, what you're requesting of the Council as a moratorium.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, Jevon, and then Susan, Susan Waters, you're after Devon. So, again, I'm going to ask you to, if you do have written documents that, to summarize those and to submit those to be a part of the record. So, thank you very much, and thank you for respecting the timeframe. Please.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jevon Merkarian. I live at 3654 Vestal Loop here in Broomfield, Colorado. I am here tonight to speak to you about industry regulation and concerns over the effectiveness of the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission. The COGCC, the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission, has a dual mandate of fostering the development of oil and gas and protecting the public health and welfare of the environment. Promoting oil and gas development while simultaneously representing the public health is an inherent conflict of interest. Further, three of the current commissioners are employed by the oil and gas industry, resulting in regulators who are directly compensated by the very companies they are charged with regulating. Both the dual mandate of the Commission and the direct financial conflict of interest are severe compromises of the objectiveness and independence of the COGCC and call into question their effectiveness as a regulatory entity. The COGCC is responsible for establishing many regulations for the oil and gas industry, such as setbacks between wells and residences or other buildings, also known as setbacks. The COGCC has established these setbacks primarily based on concerns about safety regarding accidents and explosions rather than out of concern for public health. In its purpose statement accompanying their most recent setback rules, the COGCC explicitly stated that the health impacts for air emissions are not known, so could not be factored into setback rules, and that further studies are needed. Here's the direct quote, start quote, "These setback rules are not intended to address potential human health impacts associated with air emissions related to oil and gas development. The Commission, after consulting with the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, believes that there are numerous data gaps related to oil and gas development's potential effect on human health and that such data gaps warrant further study," end quote. Further, despite constructing the setback rules, start quote, "Protect the safety and welfare of the general public from environmental and nuisance impacts resulting from oil and gas development in Colorado, including spills, odor, noise, dust, and lighting," end quote. Section 602 D and E exempt existing wells from the setback standards. Accordingly, there are currently 97 active wells in Broomfield that are exempt from the setback standards. Operating the possibility that wells could be entered and fracked multiple times in close proximity to residential areas, this is not effective rulemaking. Please enact a moratorium on fracking in our Broomfield, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shelton, do you have a clarifying question?
I did have a clarifying question, and thank you. I was curious about the Harvard study that was proposed, and so I went and I looked it up, and I found an article, and I've been skimming that. And I wondered if you were aware that the lead author of the Harvard report was a member of the Sierra Club.
I am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, the particularly related different is about the setback rules, the exemption, potential conflicts of interest in regulators, and so Jeffrey, if we could capture that and potential issues related to spills, odor, and other pieces. So, Susan, there you are. Thank you. Hi there. And Susan, why don't you, you're going to need to get a little closer to the microphone so that we can hear you and...
I'll get it lower. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'll do my best. Thank you.
Again, I just want to remind folks that we're doing pretty well in terms of the timing, but if needed, I'm going to ask you to move forward, in part because we have a long list of folks who are going to want to speak. And actually, Bridget Sanner is next after Susan. Susan, please.
Thank you. My name is Susan Waters, and I live at 16564 Antero Circle in Broomfield. I'm a senior citizen, and I'm a member of my community's Environmental Awareness Committee. My concern regarding fracking in my neighborhood is how to dispose of the wastewater known to be filled with chemicals from this process, and at the same time, to manage to keep our drinking water safe for my two children and five grandchildren. In a report dated April of 2011, the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Energy and Commerce had a report that specified concerns regarding the numerous chemicals that are in the fracturing fluids that could harm human health and the environment, especially if they were to enter the drinking water. This committee requested that 14 leading oil and gas companies disclose types and volumes of hydraulic fracturing products used between the years 2005 and 2009. The results were summarized in this report. This process, again, as mentioned earlier, of self-report and the oil company's opposition to a public disclosure of the chemicals further adds to my concerns about our community. Between 2005 and 2009, these 14 companies used 2,500 hydraulic fracturing products, 750 chemicals totaling 780 gallons of hydraulic fracturing products. Some of the chemicals used are known to be extremely toxic, some are like benzene and lead. But the most widely-used chemical during this period was methanol, which is a hazardous air pollutant, and it's on the candidate list for potential regulation under the Safe Drinking Water Act. Other widely-used chemicals, and bear with all these chemical terms, please. Of them, 650 products containing 29 chemicals are known to be carcinogens. They're regulated under the Safe Drinking Water Act to be risks to human health. They're listed as hazardous air pollutants under the Clean Air Act. The hydraulic fracturing companies admitted to injecting 11.4 million gallons of these products containing at least one of the dangerous BTEX compounds, which is benzene, toluene, xylene, and ethylbenzene. These chemicals were all covered during the study. This underground injection of the chemicals is not regulated by Halliburton, I mean by EPA, due to the Halliburton loophole, excuse me. As of 2009, Colorado is among the top four states with the highest volume of hydraulic fracturing fluids containing two betoxyl ethylanol. Now, that report has been found, according to one report, in the drinking water in a close nearby state of Wyoming. Also, in May of 2013, very recently, reported gas well casings and seals were reported by Science Magazine to fail at least 1% to 3% of the time. So, there's a risk of tanker accidents, insufficient management has occurred at the drilling sites, and seepage into the groundwater is obviously a possibility. Therefore, I urge you to consider a moratorium on fracking until more conclusive studies can be completed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, Jeffrey, it's the chemicals and the public concern around the chemicals, and particularly related to safe drinking water. And next is Bridget Sanner, and after Bridget is Dan Schmitz. Dan, you're on deck.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Bridget Sanner. I live at 2697 Gray Wolf Loop in Broomfield. I have been aware of the environmental impact related to air quality of hydraulic fracking. I had been under the impression that the water issues were not really that significant, and I was wrong. The views of a number of recent scientific studies support some of the questions that are being raised about the impact of hydraulic fracking on water quality. And let me just cite a few of these. Proceedings from the National Academy of Sciences, May 17, 2011, in part says, "Methane concentrations were detected generally in 51 of 60 drinking water wells across the region that they were studying regardless of the gas industry operations." This study continued to say, "More research is needed on the mechanism of methane containment, the potential health consequences of methane, and establishment of a baseline methane data in these locations." Groundwater, April 17, 2012, says, "Fracking can release fluids and contaminants from the shale either by changing the shale or overburdening hypergeology, or simply by injecting forced fluids, which, by simply injecting fluids which force other fluids out of the shale. The complexities of contaminant transport from hydraulic fracturing shale near-surface aquifers render estimates uncertain, but a range of interpretive situations suggests that transport times could decrease from geological scale times to as few as 10 years." And the last thing I'll quote from is Frontiers in Ecology, October 2011. "Gas well development of any type creates surface disturbances as the result of land clearing, infrastructure development, and release of contaminants produced from deep groundwater. However, the use of hydraulic fracturing poses additional environmental threats due to water withdrawals and contamination from fracking fluid chemicals. There continues to be a growing amount of scientific peer-based research which indicates there are questions about water safety and hydraulic fluid." Now, before you reach the question, "Well, we don't have water wells that we get our drinking water from in Broomfield, we need to consider ourselves as part of a whole community, we are all downstream from somebody." Thank you.
So, concern, again, related to the hydraulic fracturing and impact on water quality and a number of things. Councilmember Shelton.
Yeah, I wondered if you had seen any natural gas wells in Broomfield?
I have not.
You have not seen a single gas well in Broomfield?
I have not.
Okay, all right. Could have been by one and not seen it. Could have been walking by it, driving by it, playing golf by it. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Jer...
Chersec.
Jersec, excuse me.
Thank you. This is somewhat good news, but I don't know if, in January 7, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission adopted a new groundwater sampling rule, Rule 609. It's something that our Council will be addressing at a study session coming forward. But it is the strongest in the nation with respect to sampling requirements. Colorado joins Ohio, New York, and as the only other states to have mandatory groundwater programs. The new groundwater sampling rules supplants the Colorado Oil and Gas Association's voluntary groundwater sampling program designated by operators and state regulators. So, currently, there is a, it's called Rule 609, if you want to look it up. However, it is exempted in the greater Wattenberg area, which is our area, but something that we talked about last night at a council meeting that we are sure to address moving forward.
Okay. Is there a question? Clarification question?
Clarification topic.
Yeah.
Were you here earlier when we did the rules?
So, yes, so, let's see, Dan, you're Dan Schmitz, and Laura, you're next after Dan. Great, please, Dan.
My name is Dan Schmitz, I live at 3300 Alexander Way. I'm a private citizen, and I'm affiliated with our Broomfield. Thank you for allowing this moment for simple citizens to address the council. My opinion is that oil and gas operations are a risk to Broomfield's air quality and the health of its citizens. My reasons are based on the relationships between lung disease, ground level ozone, and volatile organic chemicals, commonly referred to as VOCs. Emphysema is a lung disease. It makes it difficult for a person to breathe, lowers quality of life, and it kills people. My wife's grandma died of emphysema. Ground level ozone damages the cells that line the air spaces in the lung. It's like internal sunburn. Repeated exposures predispose the lung to disease like emphysema. Our children, our senior citizens, and our outdoor exercisers are at particular risk. Ground level ozone is the product of a chemical reaction between nitrogen oxides and VOCs in the presence of sunlight. We have a lot of sunlight here in Colorado. Broomfield may soon have a lot of VOCs, too, and I'll get to that in a moment. You can read all about the topic of ground level ozone and its link to lung disease like emphysema on the EPA website, it's very easy to find. VOCs are reactive gases. A wide variety of solids and liquids emit VOCs. This includes consumer products like glue and paint. Propane is a VOC. Let me repeat that. Propane is a VOC. And here is where my story starts hitting home. There is a 2011 peer-reviewed scientific paper titled, and this is a long one, Source Signature of Volatile Organic Compounds from Oil and Natural Gas Operations in Northeastern Colorado. In this study, scientists measured airborne propane levels in Weld County. A key measurement site was just north of Highway 7 at the Boulder Atmospheric Observatory Tower. The propane levels in Weld County were higher than Houston, Texas, higher than Pasadena, California, and higher than 26 additional U.S. urban areas. This study identified a unique chemical signature in oil and natural gas drilling emissions. This signature is like my Amazon username. It's different from all other usernames, and it ties me directly to my activities. Scientists can use this unique chemical signature to isolate the source of the propane emissions in Weld County. The study's conclusion is that between 1/3 and 2/3 of the elevated levels of propane and other VOCs in Weld County come from oil and gas drilling activities. Cows and cars may be a problem, but their smokescreen, they aren't the problem. So here's the summary. Lung disease is linked to ground level ozone. Ground level ozone is linked to VOCs such as propane. Propane exists in significantly elevated levels in Weld County. Science believes this is due to oil and gas drilling activity. All we need to do is close the loop by making the last obvious connection. This should trouble anyone who lives in Broomfield. Oil and gas operators shouldn't have the right to trade the quality of our air for the quality of its profits. Oil and gas drilling does not belong in Broomfield and its residential communities. I urge you to consider a moratorium until more is known about the air quality impacts on our health.
Thanks, Dan. So air quality impacts on public health is the topic there. Laura, you're up, and then Sarah Salmon?
Hi.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Laura Franzkevich, resident of Broomfield and member of our Broomfield. I'm not an anti-oil and gas activist, as you may have read in the Broomfield Enterprise, and frankly, nor much of an environmentalist. I'm a working mom who's concerned about my kids and the world they will inherit. Tonight, I want to speak about methane, its effects on climate change, and how fracking plays into this. Methane is the principal component of natural gas, somewhere over 75%, although exact concentrations vary. Methane is colorless, tasteless, and even odorless at low concentrations. You cannot see it being released into the air. It is, however, easily detected by collecting samples and analyzing with scientific equipment. Methane is the second most prevalent greenhouse gas in the U.S. from human activities. According to the EPA, methane accounted for about 9% of greenhouse gas emissions from human activities. The EPA also reports that natural gas and petroleum systems are the largest source of methane emissions from industry in the U.S. Certain greenhouse gases like methane are more effective than others, for example, carbon dioxide, at warming the earth due to their efficiency at trapping radiation, thickening the blanket over the land. Research indicates that methane is a 21 to 33 times more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. 21 times is according to the EPA's conservative estimate, while 33 times is based on a Cornell University study, both based on a time period over 100 years. Over a 20-year period, which is of greater concern, methane was found to be 105 times more potent. I'll repeat, over 100 times more potent greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. The EPA's good news on climate change. The carbon dioxide emissions fell between 2005 and 2010. The bad news, methane emissions rose and have continued to rise since 2007, and the EPA says that more than half of this methane increase came from the natural gas industry, the country's biggest emitter of methane. Methane releases from fracking, including production, transportation, consumption of gas, erase much, if not all, of the advantages of gas over coal that are frequently touted as one of the main reasons to support the natural gas boom, and it is called clean. Don't believe the industry lines that natural gas offers a significant advantage over coal mining, and thus is the more climate-friendly choice. In an NCAR study, scientist Tom Wigley writes that, quote, "Even with zero leakage from gas production, the cooling that eventually arises from the coal-to-gas, excuse me, transition is only a few tenths of a Celsius degree. Using climate amelioration as an argument for transition from coal to gas is at best a very weak argument." Wigley continues, quote, "Our results show that the substitution of gas for coal as an energy source results in increased, rather than decreased, global warming for many decades," end quote. Transfer of coal and oil to natural gas is not helping climate change, it's making it worse.
Laura, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up soon, okay?
Yep. How much do they emit? Reports vary, but a recent NOAA report has confirmed findings of high methane leakage from natural gas fields. The leakage ranges from 2% to 7% found in Denver, to 9% found in Utah. Why don't oil and gas, so, I'll skip a part since you've asked me to, but methane is emitted throughout the process of extraction, intentionally and accidentally, during drilling, during flowback, during flaring. And leaking wells are also a big emitter, and they are not uncommon. Data from Pennsylvania shows that one out of 20 brand-new wells leak immediately, according to industry data. This occurs more frequently as wells age. Many of the Broomfield wells are between 10 and 20 years old. How much are they leaking? How often are they checked? Why don't oil and gas companies measure the amount of methane and the quality of the air? It's cheaper for them to lose the natural gas they emit as regulation is not required and is expensive. There's a direct quote from Cindy Allen, who heads the environment team for NCANA, saying that "direct emission measurement is extremely expensive, it's not realistic to install such devices on every single emission source."
I'm gonna ask you to summarize now, or just to conclude, please.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Could industry do a better job? Undoubtedly. But they don't expect that they will check each active and plugged well for leaks without being required to. After the fact, we know the outcomes of poor planning and the lack of sufficient study. Local, we have rocky flats. In Buffalo, they have Love Canal. In New Jersey, they have Toms River. Why proceed with so many unknowns? I'm here out of concern and genuine fear about what we might learn about fracking when it's too late. Why is there such a rush? Why are we sitting back and letting our kids and our planet bear the brunt, bear the burden of shooting first and asking questions later? My health, my kids' health, my husband's health, and my community and my friends is far more important than anything the industry can try to pass off as rationale and reasons to proceed. I'm asking that you have the courage to fight fiercely to protect our town. Enact a long-term moratorium pending outcome of this health and safety studies. This is heavy industry and requires heavy regulation.
Thank you. So the concerns around public health, in particular methane and the, and those pieces there, and again, I'm gonna ask folks that, I know you've got written documents and prepared things, there are a lot of people that want to speak, and so to summarize and to do your best in terms of to be incisive, I'm gonna ask you to do that. Next, after Sarah, is Karen Hall. Karen, here you go, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Salmon. I live at 3663 Vestal Loop in Broomfield. I'm a child psychologist. I operate the Center for Safe Schools, and we work with teaching at-risk kids all over the world. I want to tell you how much I appreciate your allowing us to be here and do this study. It's wonderful. I am not an expert, I'm a grandma. I'm not an expert in any of this, but the reason I'm here is because there are enough things out there, enough studies, that I think it warrants us to take a pretty serious look at what's happening. Current studies do show that there is a diverse set of health conditions that come, that have an impact on workers, our children, teachers. The risks have not been assessed properly yet. As in my studies, I see that there have not been a lot of extensive studies, but a couple things I want to mention to you that are of concern. The American Public Health Association issued a policy statement in 2012 citing potential risks of fracking, especially about silica exposure, which is gonna be kind of my emphasis here. Hydraulic fracturing, the sand contains up to 99% silica. Breathing silica can cause a condition called silicosis. It's a lung disease where lung tissue wraps around the silica and reacts, causing inflammation and scarring, and thus the lungs have reduced capacity to take in oxygen. Silica can also cause lung cancer, and has been linked to other diseases such as TB, pulmonary disease in kidney, and autoimmune disease. To me, that looks like an important issue that we need to look at, that in September 2012, the U.S. Government Accountability Office says that fracturing poses inherent health risks, but the extent of those risks are still unknown. So there have been some studies, I'm not going to go into that, you know, extensively, but the fact that you've heard a lot of them, I'm not gonna repeat it, that, but there also been communities reporting that fracturing causes illness and psychological stress. And as a psychologist, I'm concerned about that. You know that when there are major illnesses, their kids get anxious, frustrated, post-traumatic stress, and I think that's an important issue. So just generally, I'm gonna close by saying we need to study the effects more effectively. The health of our kids are at risk, and I think all of us need to take the time to issue this moratorium so that we can really do, find out what's really going on. Is there a risk to our health? I think that's really important, and thank you.
Thank you. And so the risk to public health, and in particular, the issue of silica that was raised. Thank you. And so Megan, Megan Mariner, and then Megan Troop, you're up next.
I'm Karen Hall.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Karen Hall.
Karen, and then Megan's next, sorry.
I live at 189 Willow Court South there in Broomfield. I've lived in Broomfield for 25 years, very happily so, and I hope to continue that. I'm also a scientist. I have a master's degree from the University of Colorado in biomedical science, and I'd like to discuss some of the health risks that are probably associated with fracking. Most of the research studies done so far are negative and not very comprehensive. One article in particular that's often cited is called the Mackenzie Report from 2012, where researchers from the Colorado School of Public Health at the University of Colorado used air toxics data collected in Garfield County, right here in Colorado, from 2008 to 2010, and other air monitoring program data, and used standard EPA procedures to estimate subchronic and chronic exposures and health risks. The results, which, you know, I can't go into, it's a 19-page report, so I did not print that out, and want to read that to you.
That's the Mackenzie Report?
It's, huh?
Mackenzie Report that you're referring to, okay.
Yes. The results that they stated in the report is that there is definitely an increased risk for people who live within a half a mile from wells, especially during the well construction and completion period, when the emissions are very high. The higher health risks that they noted are basically neurological, respiratory, and cancers. There was a rebuttal of this report done by the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, but even in their report, they agreed that more studies are needed. Another article that addresses this is from January of 2012, where Christopher Portier, who is the director of the National Center for Environmental Health and Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry at the U.S. Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta, stated to the Associated Press that, quote, "More research is needed for us to understand public health impacts from natural gas drilling and new gas drilling technologies," by which they mean fracking. My conclusion is that more comprehensive studies are needed to assess health risks related to fracking. There are three studies that are known probably to you that are underway in Colorado now. I really urge our city council to consider a moratorium until these studies are done and analyzed to assess the public health risks and readdress at that time whether it's wise to allow this in our town. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So, yeah, councilmember Shelton.
Yes, I've heard about that study before, about the cancer risks associated with being close proximity to a wellhead, and I've also seen comparisons of the same cancer risk to people living in urban settings that are around cars and heavy industry. And so that leads me to my next question about more research, is what are you looking for in more research? Because I heard earlier 1 to 3%. So what is safe? Is 3% safe? Is 1% safe?
1% less.
I can't remember before, maybe we could find clarifying, it was 1 to 3%.
That was leakage.
That was leakage.
1 to 3% failure rate. So is that safe, in your opinion?
So the question is about for council decision-making, which is sort of what additional studies and what is, what is safe and what is not, and presumably that as council, you're going to need to, sort of to weigh that, and...
But 1 to 3% failure rate is not good enough?
No.
Right, and it's not, okay.
Okay, so, and then, and the idea about more comprehensive studies related to health risks, and then the sort of the standards that are used for that is the issue that's in question. You are...
Megan.
Megan, and Megan, another Megan is up right after this Megan.
Yes.
Where are you?
Okay. Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Megan Mariner, I live at 2997 Gemini Loop. I'm not an expert on fracking. I'm a wife, a mother of three wonderful children that all attend Prospect Ridge Academy, and I'm a preschool teacher here in Broomfield. Just like my peers, I started researching about fracking when I heard that this is a real possibility in our backyard. I'm concerned about the health implications to my family, my neighbors, the schoolchildren, as well as what fracking can do to our animals, both wild and domestic. Cornell University conducted a year-long study that was performed by Robert Oswald and Michelle Bamberger. Robert Oswald is a biochemist and a professor of molecular medicine. Michelle Bamberger is a veterinarian with a master's degree in pharmacology. What they found in their study was that animals were suddenly dropping dead, getting sick, excuse me, and either becoming sterile or giving birth to deformed offspring in places where fracking was performed. Their full report, Impacts of Gas Drilling on Human and Animal Health, was in the New Solutions, a Journal of Environmental and Occupational Health Policy. Their team analyzed data from six states, including Colorado. Reproductive problems were most common, followed by upper respiratory issues, nosebleeds, burning of eyes, diarrhea, vomiting, rashes, headaches, and neurological problems in both animals and humans. We have residents across the street from us in Erie, like the Beach family, who are suffering from those same ailments. As a mother of three children, this is not how I want my children growing up. My oldest daughter has autism, and I can't imagine her having any additional medical issues that can be prevented by passing a moratorium on fracking until further health studies are done. Excuse me. So please, I ask you, as a mother, a local preschool teacher, and as a resident of Broomfield, to please pass a moratorium on fracking until we have all the facts about potential risks. Thank you.
Thank you. So the potential impacts on both public health and also in terms of animals and others, Jeffrey, are there others? Okay, Megan, please. And then the Jolene Kian?
Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Megan Troop. I'm a stay-at-home mother to two young children. children. I'm a part of our Broomfield. Thank you for your time this evening. I've spent long hours doing my best to educate myself on this complicated issue, as well as all of you, listening to various perspectives, including from individuals working in the industry who are confident that fracking is safe. And although I have much respect for these individuals, I remain skeptical that fracking is acceptable so close to my family's home and my children's potential future school. There are too many verifiable studies out there suggesting that fracking puts my family's health at risk. One example of this risk lies in the constitution of fracking fluid. According to a 2012 report by the US Government Accountability Office, the range of contaminants found in produced frac water can include, but is not limited to, salts, metals including barium, oil grease and dissolved organics like benzene and toluene, radioactive materials and production chemicals including friction reducers, and biocides to prevent the growth of microorganisms. So lots of nasty stuff in that fluid. These fluids are going to be trucked to the outskirts of our neighborhood and the adjacent property to Prospect Ridge Academy, mixed and pumped into the ground. Then the backflow will be gathered, hopefully without a spill, that's what we're all hoping for, obviously, and trucked into a disposal well. Every step in the process is an opportunity for error. Every step is an opportunity for radioactive materials to be exposed to the soil, the groundwater, and nearby residents. In the same 2012 report, the EPA describes the potential consequences of this exposure as posing a risk to human health and the environment. It says that exposure to high levels of barium includes risk of increased blood pressure, exposure to high levels of benzene includes risk of anemia and increased risk of cancer. From an environmental standpoint, elevated levels of salts can inhibit crop growth by hindering a plant's ability to absorb water from the soil. Additionally, exposure to elevated levels of metals and biocides can contribute to increased mortality among livestock and wildlife. In a 2011 report, the US House of Representatives Committee on Energy and Commerce exposed the known danger and emphasized the lack of regulations over chemicals used in fracking. This quote was actually mentioned earlier, so I'll just paraphrase what I was going to say. Basically, oil and gas use about 29 chemicals that are known or possible human carcinogens. They're regulated under the Safe Drinking Water Act for the risk to human health, and they're listed as hazardous air pollutants under the Clean Air Act. These 29 chemicals were components of more than 650 different products used in hydraulic fracturing. So fracking is not regulated by the Safe Drinking Water Act. Aspects of the disposal process are, which is why sometimes it's stated that it's a myth that it's not regulated, but the fracking process itself is not. It is exempt from regulations intended to protect the public and that would have specifically eliminated the use of the chemicals I just mentioned. Until the entire process is held to the same expectation as other industries to promote public health, it is hard to reconcile that this process is safe. Although we are all consumers of oil and gas, we have an obligation and a right as consumers to demand that the products that we consume are produced in a responsible, ethical manner, a manner that promotes public safety. The same 2011 report of the House of Representatives reveals that fracking fails to do this. It says, "The BETX compounds of benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene appeared in 60 of the hydraulic fracturing products used between 2005 and 2009." Each of these compounds are contaminants under the Safe Drinking Water Act, and they were injected into, 11, the hydraulic fracturing companies injected 11.4 million gallons of the products containing at least one BETX chemical over the five-year period. "I challenge the wisdom of conducting a procedure that uses these chemicals with such impunity so close to people's homes, children's playgrounds, and where food is grown in livestock graze." In closing, "We recognize that all decisions made as council members have an important impact on your constituents' lives. Now more than ever, though, you find yourselves at a crucial precipice, standing as the safeguards of your electorate. We ask that you provide the protection our government has not been able to provide us at the state and national levels. Please consider the substantial risk to Broomfield residents' health when weighing this decision. And please make the choice to wait to allow any further fracking until better proof can be provided that it is safe enough to take place so close to homes and schools."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Jeffrey, what we want to put here is, in addition to the concerns related to the chemicals and fluids, is proximity to schools and to family and the potential impact to public health. Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Jurcak.
Can I have a quick clarifying question for you? You can probably go over there. So there's two parts, there's one part of fracturing a well or hydraulic fracturing of a well. Once that well is then fracked, then that well produces gas for the next 20 to 30 years. So are you concerned more about the 10-day period of fracking or the repercussions from that point on?
I'm concerned with all of it, to be honest with you, but obviously, that 10-day is a point of focus. That 10-day period is a point of focus. I personally am concerned with all of it, but obviously, you want a consolidated approach to each part of the discussion.
So you and I live in the same neighborhood?
We do.
Okay. And so I did some studies that the seven wells that are closest to our neighborhood were all fracked within the last 22 years to 11 years.
I know.
And so...
Would have been nice to know all of that, wouldn't it?
Well...
I'm going to remind, I'm going to remind folks about our ground rule related to clapping, cheering. You know, I get it. I get that you support those kinds of things. It's important for us to, whether you support or you are against a particular idea, to have and remain to have a civil discourse. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to remind you about that. Councilmember Jurcak, do you have...
Yeah, and just, you know, really moving on. So it's really the wells that are around our houses. You can see them, they're the brown tanks. There's a Christmas tree well that's right next to it. So those have been producing wells for a period of time.
I've seen all of those.
Okay. But, so no one's sick. And there's, there's actually one on it...
Do you know that?
There's one on the Broadlands on a tee box, actually, on the Broadlands Golf Course. So we are around wells, and so, there was a question earlier, but there's 21 wells, 20 of which are in Broomfield County, north of Highway, or 144th, south of Highway 7. And so, yeah, you know, I'm concerned, but the fact that we are already living around wells that are done. So as people talk about fracturing wells, you know, is it the fracking process that emits the water in, pulls the water out that everybody's afraid of, or is it the having a well 2,800 feet from a house that is sitting there?
I think the largest part of the concern is that none of us really know what problems are going to be caused from this. And the fact that these wells are so close to us, and that there are no, there are not enough known studies about what can happen because of this, and all of the anecdotal evidence that's given to areas that are so close to us, that's what's raising our concern. Nobody can really give us any information that is giving me any, nobody's giving me any concrete evidence that this is something that's safe.
So part of, part of the challenge is the uncertainty as it relates to that...
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think Councilmember Geiser has a question.
In the seven and a half years I've been in office, we've probably had 20 hearings, public hearings on wells. Every well that's been put into Broomfield has had public hearings, so it's not something that's been hidden ever. It's just that no one was really concerned about it until recently.
Okay, so that's more of a comment than a question, but thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, I did want to, I know Mr. Shelton had several questions, and I don't know if I will help any clarification, but a few of those questions. I know one of your questions was about the 1% to 3% failure rate, and whether or not that we would be comfortable if that was safe or not. Just to clarify that statistic, that is an immediate failure rate. That's not an overall failure rate of wells over time. That is just 1% to 3% failure rate immediately, off the, off the bat, basically. And I don't have a time period for like how soon, since the well, you know, when the well starts, but just clarification for that statistic.
Okay.
Also, the Mackenzie Report, the 66% greater cancer risk, that's when wells are behaving, not when they're failing. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Thanks for that clarification. Next is Jolene, please. And on deck, so to speak, is Kirk Bronkowitz.
Good evening. My name is Jolene Kian. Thank you, City Council and fellow Broomfield residents. I'm also a Broomfield resident. I live at 16651 turret way in Broomfield. And I'm also with our Broomfield, and I'm also a stay-at-home mom to two young children, and I'm just concerned, like many others who've mentioned before me. My family just moved here from Boston right before Christmas, and honestly, you know, this wasn't something I was aware of, and it certainly would have made me think a million times over before moving, just because there are so many uncertainties. So anyways, I have a concern about the overall possible effects on, of hydraulic fracturing on public health. I have a couple of studies that I just made some quotes from. I shortened everything since we've been asked. The first was the natural gas operations from a public health perspective, published in the Human and Ecological Risk Assessment, an international journal. It goes on to list that 944 products containing 632 chemicals used during natural gas operations was compiled, and of the chemicals that were properly identified, you've kind of heard this before, more than 75% of the chemicals could affect skin, eyes, other sensory organs, respiratory and gastrointestinal systems. 40 to 50% could affect the brain and nervous system. 37% could affect the endocrine system. 25 could cause cancer and mutations. These results indicate that many chemicals used during the fracturing and drilling stages may have long-term health effects and are not, that are not immediately expressed. Once again, it's important to note that not all of the chemicals were properly identified because they weren't all listed by their chemical abstract service number, which allows them to be found and to be determined what health effects they could cause. The study also found that in addition to land and water contamination issues at each stage of production and delivery, tons of TOL tons of VOCs, including the BETX, benzene, ethylbenzene, toluene, and xylene, and other hydrocarbons and methane, can escape and mix with nitrogen oxides from the exhaust of diesel-fueled mobile and stationary equipment to produce groundwater ozone, which you heard a little bit about earlier. I have one more study that I just wanted to make a couple quotes from. It was the North Carolina Oil and Gas Study under Session Law 2011-276, presented in April of 2012. They found that different contaminants associated with oil and gas operations present varying degrees of potential public health risks. They determined that without knowing the exact composition of chemicals that might be used in the process of developing natural gas, it's not possible to say what the specific health risks are to the release of drilling chemicals, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. It's not possible to say what specific health risks the release of drilling chemicals into the groundwater would pose. They concluded that no comprehensive studies are currently available on long-term health effects, and they recognize that questions remain about health impacts. These are just two of the studies. Many governmental bodies have concluded that questions remain about health impacts, and accordingly, this practice in a residential area doesn't seem to be very prudent and responsible. It appears that a moratorium might be needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kirk, you're up, and then Nate, next.
Thanks. I just wanted to read on behalf of an individual who couldn't be here this evening, but he is a parent of a student at Prospect Ridge Academy. It says, "I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of supporting a call for comprehensive health impact assessments, or HIAs, here in Broomfield, in order to come to terms with the risks and costs of continued and expanded unconventional oil and gas development. In comparison to more concrete health studies, HIAs involve harder-to-monitor psychological, sociocultural, and environmental factors that lead to chronic illness. These assessments involve deep and long-term engagement with local communities. Scientific evidence of causal links between public health and unconventional oil and gas development has been limited, creating an urgent need to understand the potential public health impacts. For communities like Broomfield, cresting on rapid change in their environments due to oil and gas developments, too much can be at stake to rely solely on the results of long-term studies that can take place after oil and gas developments. Pennsylvania is one state that has extensively and successfully undertaken HIAs in an effort to bridge the knowledge gap and to point towards policy changes needed to protect public health. The point of Pennsylvania's studies and those being requested tonight is to eliminate a threat before harm can occur and to demand that affected communities not have to wait for conclusive proof of causation before any preventative action is taken. The precautionary principle says that if there is scientific uncertainty about the harms posed by an activity, then those proposing that activity have the duty to prevent harm. With health impacts in Pennsylvania studies related to increase of dust in the air that affects indoor and outdoor air quality, and noted change to drinking water, the highest percentages of responses reported symptoms of nausea, dizziness, headache, eye and vision problems, respiratory problems, and nose and throat problems within close proximity to gas extraction and production facilities. Without a baseline of information on public health, policymakers will have a difficult time determining the potential for harm to public health and enacting appropriate preventative measures. Broomfield needs to take the time to embark on important health impact assessments and analysis in order to develop informed policies that prevent harm, embolden the precautionary principle, and ensure that environmental protection is a right and not a privilege. The status quo in which science and policy changes proceed slowly while gas development accelerates rapidly is likely to worsen air and water quality, resulting in negative health impacts and potential public health crisis in the future. Thank you.
The issue around uncertainty, the need for health impact assessments. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Nate. And then up after Nate is Dave Walden. Dave?
I'm Nate Troop.
A little closer, Nate.
Sure. I'm Nate Troop. I'm with our Broomfield. Tonight, you've heard a series of presentations citing peer-reviewed studies that are, and governmental reports to conclude fracking creates significant damage to the air and the water. I won't repeat them for brevity. You are aware that fracking creates substantial increases in traffic and noise as well, creates considerable stress to the Broomfield infrastructure, and challenges the homeowner's right to peaceably enjoy the property that they purchased. But most importantly, you've heard empirical evidence that fracking poses a significant health risk to your residents. That said, the extent of the health risk remains uncertain, a position that even COGAC agreed with when, in response to Mackenzie Report, they stated, quote, "Additional studies are needed," end quote. You've also heard about the COGCC, the regulatory body charged with both protecting the public health and fostering the development of oil and gas, a conflict of interest that doesn't exist in any other regulatory body that I'm aware of. Unfortunately, even with that, with what the COGCC describes, in their own words, as "numerous data gaps related to oil and gas development's potential effect on human health," end quote, they are happy to continue to allow a practice most believe has a pervasive negative effect on our health, on the health of your constituents, your neighbors, and yourselves. Even when they do set rules, such as the 500-foot setback, they exempt industry from full compliance. As you heard earlier, the regulations exempt operators from setback rules for existing wells. Broomfield has seen an increase from 66 well permit applications in 11 years to 31 in four months. A marked increase in a practice with substantial risk to the public health overseen by a regulatory body whose very mission embodies a conflict of interest. This leaves you, the local government, as the last voice of reason to protect the citizens, just as was the case in Longmont, Fort Collins, and indeed, in any Colorado city that wants the highest health standards. Further, it's legal for local government to regulate when asserted appropriately. Many of you have seen, and I will provide, the video of Dan Leftwich, an attorney with 20 years of litigation experience, who presented several cases to Boulder County that support his following assertions, quote, "You have legal authority to issue a moratorium for as long as it takes to conduct a good-faith, rational health impact study," end quote. I've met Dan and would be happy to help you guys meet him or help the city council or the staff meet him. So tonight, on behalf of our Broomfield, and in fact, on behalf of all Broomfield residents, we'd like to formally ask for a moratorium commencing immediately and concluding only upon the completion and the assessment of a comprehensive study of the impact of fracking on the public health. Three such studies are commencing in Colorado, including one by the CDPHE. The mere existence of three studies in one state strongly suggests that there is substantial risk, and that the only prudent and reasonable course of action is to wait and see what those studies say. In the future, these health studies are going to come out. They will be used to definitively judge whether or not, in this moment, with the overwhelming body of evidence already in the public view, you made the right decision for the people of Broomfield. How terrible would it be if the studies confirmed incredibly detrimental health impacts? How terrible would it be to have to explain to future generations that even after listening to all of this evidence you've heard, you didn't have the courage to simply say, "Let's just wait"? Last sentence. I know that you have that courage, and we all look forward to you putting it on stage.
Thank you. Councilmember Shelton? Folks, really?
And that's fine. That's appropriate. I think the organized group is done. I think that might be the, you might be the final one, Nate, so, thank you. I kind of wanted to summarize. We heard that there's a lack of regulations, but Colorado has the most stringent regulations in the United States, so I wanted to clear that up. I'm not here to speak on behalf of oil and gas. I take a very objective approach to this.
Hey, folks, please.
It's good to meet you tonight. You've never met me before. My questions have to do with the injection of the wells. I wonder if it's clearly understood that injection wells are about 10,000 feet below the surface, and so the hint was that our fracking fluids, after coming out of the well, are being put into groundwater. You heard all of those concerns. These injection wells are thousands of feet below the earth. They don't affect our surface water. They don't affect our surface water at all. I heard a study that talked about one...
Councilmember Sheldon, is there a question that, because part of, again, part of what we're trying to do tonight is to hear, and we're going to hear a variety of perspectives, including, so is there a question at least?
I want to define conflict of interest. You mentioned that, Nate. The study by Harvard that was used as fact, do you see that as a conflict of interest? That the author was from the Sierra Club?
And the author that wrote the report that I'm assuming you were responding to was who? Was with Energy in Depth? They are funded by oil and gas.
It was what?
Is it by Energy in Depth?
So we... I'm reading a Forbes article.
I don't know. I don't know the source of it. I don't know the author. You challenged the author of the study.
Do you think Sierra, do you think the author's association with the Sierra Club is a conflict of interest?
I think that both authors may have conflicts of interest. I don't know what you read.
Okay, so I don't think that we're going to actually get the kind of input that we need by debating the studies tonight and the authors related to that. So Nate, thank you for your presentation. Councilmember, your sec.
Hey, Nate. Sorry.
Is there a question, councilmember?
Yes, just wait for me to get back. So the three current studies?
Yes, sir.
Anywhere between 18 months and three years, that's kind of their deal. And you're only one of many.
Yep.
But is it your expectation to wait till those, conclusion of those studies? Or that's kind of the, kind of crux, that there's another one that starts in a year?
So you want a clear, a clearer definition of what we're asking for in a moratorium? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
So there are three studies going on right now. There's one with the CD-PHE, there's one by Colorado State University, which is funded in part by COGA, and there's one by Colorado, University of Colorado, which is funded by the National Scientific Foundation. So they've all got their different funding sources, which may inflict, may influence their bias or may not influence their bias. I have no idea. I'm not a scientist. I'm an accountant. That being said, the overwhelming theme that we keep seeing over and again is we don't know the full effect of the health impact, and there's no study out there yet that says it's definitely good for you. So we're taking the position that we'd like to see more definitive, comprehensive health studies completed, and I would leave it to council, to a certain extent, to decide what's best in your view for the city of Broomfield, but I think we need a comprehensive study completed and assessed and understood, and then from there, we can say to ourselves, okay, here's what they concluded. What do we need to do for our regulations, which in Broomfield were last updated in 1993? Which, by the way, was before a lot of the fracking was as prevalent. The ones that you mentioned that were fracked in Broomfield were likely vertically fracked, not horizontally fracked. I don't know that for a fact. I'm just making a guess because a lot of the expansion in oil and gas recently is because of hydraulic fracture. It's a new technology. I know it's been out there for a while, but it's definitely being used a lot more. And when it's used a lot more, when they frac, sorry, horizontally, it has a much more pervasive impact, and it pushes out a lot more toxins than the currently existing wells. I think all these things are things that we need to understand.
So let me understand. So it's the comprehensive study, the impact study, and that is what you're asking the council to wait for and to then determine on the basis of that, those results, and so that study is different from the CD-PHE, the COGA?
Those are three.
Yeah, there's three going on. I got to be honest, I don't know the timing of all three of them. I mean, if the first one comes out...
Three years is what they thought the last one would be done.
The last one or the first one? That's the last one. I mean, look, if you get, if you get one that comes out, I can't predict the future. If you get one that comes out in 18 months, right, because I think that's, you're saying the first one is 18 months? Okay, so if you get one that comes out in 18 months, let's look at, let's look at what the findings were. Let's look at the community response. Let's look at the challenge from both sides, and then, and then decide then, do we want a further moratorium?
And I agree, we're going to try to do the best thing we can for Broomfield.
Understood, of course.
The courts don't necessarily agree, and our state doesn't necessarily agree when there's a lawsuit by the state against the city of Longmont.
So that's...
So, you know, I'm clearly understanding what the statement and the question is.
And I can speak to that if that's a question.
So really, the question is, is that towards the end, so as our attorney had mentioned earlier, there's a, once you get in the courts, there's got to be a materialistic idea of when this moratorium, if there was a moratorium, were to end. You can't just say until a study that we all agree with.
Yes, sir. So what Mr. Tudhill referred to, which I completely understand is a ban on fracking, is being challenged legally a lot. I'll give you a video of an attorney speaking, Dan Leifwitch, 20 years of litigation experience, very qualified. He has four cases that he cites. He understands the legal risk to an extended moratorium, or two legal concepts, taking and peremption, which I will not profess to be able to speak to. I'm also not an attorney. I'm still an accountant. There are good other cases out there that have upheld that you can enact a moratorium for as long as you need to if it's in the interest of getting health information, and it's done in good faith. The question on timing is mostly around what good faith means. And good faith means you can't just throw a smokescreen and say, "We're going to do it for six years." Why? Because it's probably going to take six years. But what you can say is, there's three studies that are ongoing right now, and all of them have said, "It's probably going to take three years to really know the answer." It would be very difficult to say attaching to those three studies, or one of those three studies, or two of those three studies is not being done in good faith. They've all said it's going to take a long time. So attaching to a extended period of time, is it 18 months? Is it three years? I'm not sure. I am convinced from having spoken with Mr. Leifwitch that there's a very good case to be made that you can do an extended moratorium. His case is, for reference, I don't have the names of them, but I will provide them to you. But they had a 40, 44, and a 40-month, 44-month, and eight-year moratorium. Those are long.
Okay, councilmember Derta has a question, I believe.
Thank you. Actually, you answered one of my questions, was about how long, but who would, would you accept this study? Who would you like to do this study? Is one of them currently being done, one that you would approve?
You know, I'm not a scientist, and I can't speak to the technical merit of the individual studies. I would really need additional resources, additional, I'd love, if I were in council seat and I were trying to make that determination, I would ask experts from both sides, from oil and gas, and EPA experts, and, you know, grab a handful of folks, maybe a citizen forum, perhaps, or a citizen advisory council, perhaps, who's got some background in science. I don't. I can't really speak to which ones I'd like. You should look at the source of funding and understand that. You should look at their methodologies, which I can't even speak to, and unless you all are scientists, you probably can't speak to them either, so it's not fair for you. But engage outside experts and figure out how to answer that question. I can't answer it definitively.
Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Nate. We're going to move to Dave, Dave Walden, please. I'm going to, I'm going to note at our, just a process check in terms of time, that we're at 7:15. This meeting will be finished at nine o'clock. I have a long list of folks, so I'm going to, again, ask folks to be concise and make your points, and please, Dave.
Dave Walden, Highland Park, Broomfield.
Marty Robinson's next.
Fracking, fear, and our future. Much like everyone in this room, as I exit US 36 and I-25, and increasingly, on any major thoroughfare in this area, I am confronted with signs. And as I approach these signs, these signs are held by an individual usually, and they're purporting to provide me with information. Matter of fact, they're asserting certain facts to provide me with that information. Now, you've seen the signs. You're familiar with them. They say things like homeless, hungry, stranded, unemployed, lost my job, please help. Now, the dilemma I face, like you all, when you are confronted with these signs, is I have no way of knowing the validity of the claims being made on the sign, or more importantly, if those claims are true, the context in which they're true. For example, if someone is claiming they're unemployed, are they in fact unemployed? Or am I simply witnessing their new career? If they are in fact unemployed, what are the circumstances? Were they laid off because their company featured a sudden and unexpected cutback?
Dave, I'm going to ask you to speak to the oil and gas production, please.
This is all relating to the oil and gas issue.
Okay, you have about a minute left.
Or were they caught stealing, and therefore they were summarily fired? Or something in between? They're just undependable. The dilemma that I face is not unlike the dilemma that you people are facing. You are being presented with a vast array of signs with information on them, but unlike me, sitting at a light in ignorance, with no way of knowing the validity or the context of those signs, you are going to have to make a decision where I just get to, when the light changes, drive off. So towards resolving that dilemma for you, you're fortunate. You have information at your disposal that should you choose to look at it and evaluate it, you will be able to make an informed decision with respect to the issues that you are contemplating.
Dave, your time's up. Make your point, please.
Martha, being that I'm of the old school, and ladies come before gentlemen, I'll present this to you, because this is a vast array of information about the subject fracking and fear and our future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so next is Marty Robinson, and after that is Felix Fletcher. Felix? Go ahead, Marty.
Good evening, mayor and members of city council. My name is Marty Robinson. I'm retired, and for the past six years have lived in Anthem Ranch neighborhood, just west of the subject Sovereign Wells, at 16579 Chesapeake Drive. My education is that I'm an engineer. My vocation is being that of general manager, senior executive, and entrepreneur. My first career was in oilfield services, beginning in 1968 with Schlumberger, a global technology company providing services to oil and gas industry. I spent five years as a field engineer, actually making measurements related to the subject of fracking and proper completions in the oil and gas industry. And then I spent three years selling those services, relating to cement evaluation and safe well completion, and pressure control, and emissions control, and all these kind of things. I worked in many locations in North America. One of my assignments was technical manager for North America. After almost 20 years, I retired from that career as a vice president for the Western Land Offshore, Western Land Operations offshore California, Alaska. As a result of my experience, I have perspective. I'm familiar with all the technologies required to safely construct, evaluate, and monitor wells, as well as the nature of the various organizations, from individuals to large-scale integrated multinationals who construct and operate them. My perspective, after 45 years and 20 years in the industry, is that with rare, with the occasional exception of human error, I have always found both the oil and gas industry and regulatory agencies to be extremely competent at making the safety of all concerned parties a high priority. Now, I'm going to make a sidebar from the comments that I presented to you in my, in an email, based on comments this evening. Here's a fact. Fracking is not a new technology. It's been here since 1968. What is a new technology is accurate directional drilling and horizontal drilling, which allows the efficient use of, makes for a compact footprint with multiple wells from one lease, as well as very efficient completions and production from the wells, making them massively more productive. Second point, with regard to studies, I would suggest that we've had the best and most accurate study possible about the effects of fracking on health, 45 years of practical experience. If it's a problem, where are all the health issues? Where, we've had, this is a massive study in North America and other parts of the world. So with those two points, I'll go over my written comments.
Marty, you're about three minutes, so I'm going to ask you to summarize. I guess I understand that from your experience in oil and gas, your sense is that you can do this, that A, it's not a new technology, and that you can do this...
No, I want to make a couple more points.
Sure. Go ahead, but please, please be brief.
Because some of the practical issues raised here are just related to construction-related activity, and I'll ignore those because I present those in my email. With regard to emission concerns and the potential exposure of children at the school or nearby residents, I note that when I attended an Adams 12 School Board meeting a couple years ago, where our main topic of discussion was the location of this school at 149 Fourth and Zunai, not a single parent expressed safety concerns about a well on that property. And if it weren't for the statesmanship of our mayor and city council, that school would not have been located where it is today. In that regard, so I would, what I'd say, I'll wrap it up. It appears that the creative rhetoric and activism of those opposed to fracking and old technology, let's be honest, actually to the continued development and economic benefits of fossil fuel energy resources, driven by beliefs in global warming, has unduly elevated the fears of parents of the children at the school, as well as our residents in our community. That being said, no amount of reasoning will immediately eliminate those concerns. So let me get to my practical recommendation. What should we do in the near term? I note that the sovereign operator up the hill from my house, near the school, appears to be a relatively small operator, a management company, not really an oil and gas company, such as Noble Energy. As such, they have limited skill sets in the area of the latest controls for emissions monitoring and early warning in the event that a testing or production problem occurred. So if the city council is creating a memorandum of understanding with this operator for their project, I'm hopeful that you'll place particular emphasis on emissions control, perhaps looking to the standards employed by Noble Energy as a reasonable benchmark.
Okay. So looking at the particular standards on emissions controls and working with the upgrade.
Early warning to assuage the undue fears that I believe people have about fracking.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, so that is Felix.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Felix Fletcher. I'm a professional engineer, 20-year resident homeowner here in Broomfield in Ward 4. I have participated extensively in my 20 years here in Broomfield in health, environmental, sustainability issues, serving on the human, on the Health and Human Services Master Plan, and the Sustainability Citizen Advisory Committees. I have also served in Broomfield on an employee loan between EPA and the county, and helped to develop the current county oil and gas setback rule. So I speak from an informed basis, I would assume. I served for 32 years as an environmental engineer at US EPA. I regulated the oil and gas industry. Based on my professional experience and training, I caution the council that there are serious gaps and misunderstandings, as has been demonstrated here tonight, regarding the measures which we assume are in place to protect the health of persons residing in proximity to oil and gas development sites. State air regulations are designed to measure and mitigate air contamination impacts on the general population and on regional air quality. These regulations do not mitigate the impacts of toxic gas releases from oil and gas activities on single homes and individuals. Broomfield citizens by default must rely on you, the council, to protect them from the impacts of these industrial activities. The ability to protect the general health and welfare of Broomfield citizens is within the jurisdiction of the Broomfield Council. You must agree with that. That is your mandate, to protect the general health and welfare. As noted by the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, as was already done, there are currently data gaps. currently data gaps. There are currently data gaps with regard to risk assessments and knowledge. Air emissions will pose a real and certain risk to Broomfield citizens residing in proximity to oil and gas industrial sites. A fracking well is a mega oil and gas production site. Coming to your question, vertical fracking, you frac 100, 200 feet max in the pay zone. We're talking about...
You can ask me to wrap up.
I'm going to get to the points here. Because the council, unless you want to give me another minute because I'm going to answer your question.
Keep going.
Okay. That right now, these horizontal wells, they go out for about a mile and they're fracked. So the comparison, when you put five to 10 of these on a pad, you've got 100 to 200 feet of frac versus five to 10 miles of frac that's reporting to one location. That's the problem. These one locations are going to require the imposition of air emission controls. Think of it, this is the same number of wells that we have right now in Broomfield would be at one, potentially one site in Broomfield, the amount of emissions. Release, controlling the emission controls, or I'm sorry, control of air emissions, eliminating toxic air releases from these activities is warranted. Until new county air rules can be developed, a moratorium on approval of well sites in Broomfield is wise, protective, and prudent.
Okay, so a moratorium until those new studies particularly related to air and the concerns around public health and...
No. Kelsma Jersak?
No, go ahead. You were going to say...
Yeah, because I was trying to answer your question in my comments and so I just wanted, if you give me another minute.
I don't know about a minute. He's in charge.
So without comprehensive local land use and environmental controls on future oil and gas development, the immediate and future liabilities from these activities will have an adverse impact on Broomfield's financial master plan and the investments of Broomfield citizens. An immediate moratorium on approval of oil and gas well drilling is warranted for the following reasons: to develop, I'm sorry, to determine and develop appropriate measures and controls which mitigate economic liabilities and which eliminate human health impacts on Broomfield citizens from these activities. That's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would then that require the three studies that are previous?
I'm not limiting myself to the studies on that recommendation. I'm saying that determining and developing appropriate measures is the step and the controls which then mitigate the liabilities, the economic liabilities. I'm really concerned about that. A science park in the north part, how many billion-dollar companies are going to want to put that next to an industrial mega site?
Rick Fernandez, you're up. Rick, and then Anne Hendrickson, you're after Rick. Thank you.
Rick Fernandez, I've been 1450 Balboa Court. I'm a lifelong Broomfield resident. I basically grew up here. I've been here my entire life. And I'm saying that mainly to say, I've seen Broomfield grow through the years. I've seen what the city was when I was a kid. I've seen where the city has gone since then. And I'd say that as far as what Broomfield does in terms of its planning and its growth, I give the city councils in the past and city council here tonight as well, a lot of credit for taking measured steps in what they do. So with that being said, I do want to make a few points on what I've heard here tonight. First point is that yes, in Colorado, we do have what I consider some of the most stringent regulations within the U.S., and we have to acknowledge that. The other thing that I think needs to be important to mention here is, a lot of mentions towards studies that have been done in the past, there's one that I think is equally as important, and that is a study that was done for the city of Erie, which is the Department of Public Health and Environment, so done by the state of Colorado, which was based on December 5. And within that study, there are a few things that I think are important to point out here. It was conducted last summer for about two, three weeks, like 20th through August 6th, compared the emissions within Erie at existing well sites to Denver and Platteville, which were basically in Waldo County. And I'll come back to the summary of this, but there were some specific findings that I wanted to point out here for the council. Measurements taken at a few of the sites, basically they looked at a couple of well sites that were within reasonable proximity to schools, and I'm talking similar to what we're talking about with Prospect Ridge, 2,000 feet away from one of the wellheads, another 1,400 feet away from another wellhead. And they were basically putting the sensor downwind from those wells. And what came out of that were, in terms of methane measurements, average concentrations recorded that those Erie sites were aligned concentrations that were viewed in Denver and in Waldo County between, these were numbered, 1.8 and 1.84 parts per million for methane. For benzene, where the EPA itself within this study says anything below one, in terms of their estimations, and I'm not sure if I can pull this out here, acute risk is basically anything of, acute hazard quotient of one or less is acceptable to the EPA. For benzene within Waldo County at those same sites, the acute hazard quotient, which is basically I'm exposed to it for between one and 14 days, which could be a period of time actually at the well site and working. Those acute hazard quotients at those two Erie sites were .07 and .05. So from that type of data, I think it's important to note that the regulations that are in place in Colorado, plus the responsibility of those companies that are actually performing the drilling are well within, if not well below, the EPA standards. So I want to make sure we make that point. For benzene in particular, the average concentration recorded at those sites were between .728 and 1.17 parts per billion for benzene. Slightly higher average concentration on certain places they found was actually related to truck traffic around the sites, not related to the emissions from the site themselves. And I think it's important to note that as well. Here's the summary that came out of this report. Concentrations of various compounds are comparatively low and not likely to raise significant health issues of concern. And that's not me as a citizen saying that, that's the Colorado State study that was done on the part and on behalf of Erie. So, wanted to wrap up by saying this. There have been a number of comments made tonight, a lot of concerns raised, and I understand that those concerns are there. I think that one thing that hasn't been said that needs to be said is I think you need to consider the people that own the land and the property rights, the people that are actually taking part in this industry are doing it, and to assume that the only reason they're doing it is to make a profit and not doing it with the best interests of the community and as stewards to them and stewards to that community, I think is unfair. And I think it's irresponsible for anybody to make that statement without true background and true evidence that that is the case. And that's all I'd like to say.
So Jeffrey, in terms of recognition of the property rights owners and the owners of that land, and there's also additional studies that have been cited by Rick. Thank you, Rick. Anne, please.
Yes, my name is Anne Hendrickson, and I'm a Broomfield homeowner, and I live at 13300 Red Deer Trail. And I am a regulatory manager in the energy industry. And I would like to say, and I would like to encourage the council members, to adopt a policy or continue a policy of oil and gas production in the city and the counties because such production won't occur without a permit from state agency, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. The operators, when they apply for a permit, it's a very rigorous and comprehensive permitting process by the state agency. They have to describe well design, spacing, operation, water management and disposal, air emissions, wildlife impacts, surface disturbances. If the permit is granted by the state agency, it will oversee all the drilling operations and require public disclosure of hydraulic fracturing treatments performed. So I would encourage a policy of pro oil and gas production.
Okay. Thank you. So sort of the support of oil and gas production in Broomfield, talking about the, in particular the COG permitting process in the sense that that is provided COGC rigorous oversight. We have Hank Stovall. Hank, you're up, Hank. And then, let's see, it's Jeannie Hartley. You're afterwards, okay? You're on after Hank. Hank, you're up.
I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for abiding this meeting and for any work. As a 44-year resident in Broomfield, 24 years on this council, and I take some pride in helping to clean up rocky flats to a more acceptable level. Having said that, I'd like to draw a parallel between what's going on in rocky flats and what's not going on in the oil and gas industry. At rocky flats, the regulators and contractors violating environmental laws wholesale to advance the cost of production. In the industry, they've sought exemptions to environmental laws so that they don't get sued, so that environmental laws are degraded to some extent, I'll get into that a bit later. But specifically at rocky flats, somebody earlier said the regulators are aiming on the side of safety. I'd suggest that in the case of rocky flats, that was not the case. Unknown to the public, tritium was dumped in our reservoir in 70, 71, 72, and it went until 1973, and there was a major spike in tritium that the public was apprised by Mount Hail with the counterpart. Beyond that, I worked on the cleanup of rocky flats for about 10 or 12 years.
I'm going to ask you to focus on oil and gas production here if you would, please.
I'm doing fairly on regular. Kyler Bill suggested that through this application of the model, that a cleanup level of 3,000 to 4,000 and 10,000, future risk assessment was adequate. The community went to listening, we said, no, that's not adequate. At the rate, the regulators, EPA, DWE, and the Department of Health thought that 3,000 to 4,000 thousand was a reasonable level. That would amount 3,000 to 4,000 additional cancers in the western million population of the metropolitan area. I'll move on to the other points I think. On the loophole, as you know, there's an endarko-noble loophole, and the legislation tried to correct that at 9:00 in the House. If you want to know about the Halliburton loophole, just Google "Halliburton loophole", and you'll see the six or eight environmental laws that have been watered down due to the Halliburton situation. So, say it again?
We're running out of time.
There's been some mention about the health effects, I won't put a lot in detail, but there's an osteoplastic doctor, Dr. John Hughes in the salt, who tested 11 patients in Erie, and the finding was that they were at high levels of ethyl benzene in their blood. And these people were suffering nosebleeds and larytritis. So to suggest that there are no impacts from some of these conditions would be ridiculous.
The point is about the health impacts as it relates to oil and gas.
That's right.
So I'm going to ask you to make one final point, and then I'm going to, I mean, there's a lot of people on the line for that.
As a 44-year resident of Broomfield, I have a representation for the city council, I'm concerned about the health impacts of the citizens of Broomfield. I'm concerned about the potential subsidence out in Anthem due to fracking. I'm concerned about the potential for raising radioactive elements such as radium and uranium from drilling. Those are both soluble. My recommendation to the council is a six-month moratorium, have specialized legal counsel to keep track of what's going on. There's a lot going on in the city, it's typical when we get on rocky flats. And secondly, assign part-time a city staff person to oversee the oil and gas wells. I am a Broomfieldian.
Okay, thank you, Sophie. Health subsidence and some specific recommendations in terms of staffing and the support of that. Thank you very much. Jeannie?
Yeah, my name is Jeannie Hartley. This is on...
Jeannie, and then Steve Reynolds, you're up next. Steve?
My name is Jeannie Hartley. I'm a resident of Broomfield. I live in 13 Evergreen Place. I've been living here for eight years. I'm also an employee from the county of Broomfield. I'm a yoga instructor. I teach yoga to prenatal mothers, to children, to adults. I also teach for 24 Hour Fitness, and I'm part owner with my husband of the only bookstore in Broomfield. I lost, the computer would print out my notes today, but that's going to be good news to you because this is going to be a lot shorter because of that. But I just want to say on the note of scientific data and documentation, medical, legal, et cetera, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a nurse, I'm not a lawyer. But I did spend the last three hours before this meeting of re-watching a film called Fracking Hell, which is extensive documentation, documentation, it's not hyperbole, it's documentation in fact, from lawyers, from scientists, from doctors, from victims who have already suffered the consequences of fracking in Colorado, from waking up with nosebleeds, from their water being completely contaminated in Maryland, from their children dying. I did go on and on. I'm here to ask you for a lot more than doing a moratorium. Don't take our word for any of the things that you're hearing. On that note, I already sent a letter to you tonight with links of everything I'm talking about, so you can verify any article or film or landmark case I refer to. Do your homework. You've probably done a lot of it already, but I want to reiterate something that I was trying to say earlier. It's your job to protect us. Our life is in your hands. You know, we just saw this horrific tragedy in Oklahoma. The extraordinary thing to me is that humanity shows the best of itself during the tragedy. You are in an extraordinary position to do the heroic thing before the tragedy. I can promise you that there are people that are in this room right now that are for fracking that will be back here to testify against it if they become sick or their children do, or if their water becomes contaminated. You don't have to take our word for it. Do research all the links that I've already sent you. I just wanted to quote a couple of things because again, I don't have my notes. So just give me a moment.
No, no.
Okay, just give me a moment. One of the points I want to make here, that I think as citizens and as leaders of Broomfield County, the article's not coming out, but Governor Hickenlooper made it very public, here it is, "Hickenlooper threatens to sue any town or city that bans fracking." Hickenlooper says he will not tolerate cities or towns that ban oil and gas drilling within their borders, and he promises to take them to court. That is a blatant message from our governor that if we as citizens decide in our community that we don't think that this is safe, if we decide we want this moratorium, if you decide you want this moratorium as our leaders, and that decision's in your hands, the governor is going to sue you for it. The last one I want to leave you on is that there are landmark cases showing victories against this kind of behavior from leaders and from the corporations that have financially vested interests in fracking. Any company that's for fracking is going to say it's safe because they want the money. Please, I implore you, I'm not asking you just for a moratorium, I'm asking you to get as much knowledge as you can about this subject before you make your decision. Thank you.
Steve Reynolds. And then Tom Cade, you're next, after Steve. Tom?
Good evening, I'm Steve Reynolds. I've been in Broomfield for 58 years growing up, and then now raising a family. And I care very much for this town like everybody else does. I'm also a geologist who over the last 35 years worked in the water, environmental, and oil and gas industry, and have been studying fracking from all sides for decades. In 1995, I'd actually, I was asked to meet with city officials to discuss standards for oil and gas activity that work within the city, the state regulations, and to best protect our city. So it's not getting into a lawsuit that we would for surely lose. Where I bring tonight is just back to simple facts, and only as to groundwater and fracking. I've heard that a number of times, there's so many subjects we're trying to get to, I'll just keep it to that point itself. just keep it to that point itself. Since 1947, there's been over 1.2 million fracs conducted within the United States alone. Let me say that again. There's been over 1.2 million fracs conducted in the U.S., and there's not been a single occurrence of a groundwater damage, not a single one. We have, I brought with me today, statements from 10 of the nation's top oil and gas-producing states, health, environmental, and natural resource departments, both in red and blue states, this is not a political thing, who have all stated the fracking, the studies that they've done on fracking, and all of them say that there's no instances of that fracking has done any harm to groundwater. Now, let's take it to the federal level, where officials at the U.S. Department of the Interior told Congress that we have not seen any impacts to groundwater as a result of hydraulic fracturing. In May 2011, EPA administrator Lisa Jackson told the U.S. Senate that she wasn't aware of any proven case where fracking processes affected water. So, as to water only, there's many topics we're trying to go through here, too many more than to go through on this. I just ask we go through this process and deal with the facts. It is, it can be emotional when there are so many political agendas being pushed at us, and many falsehoods that are out there in regards to many of these issues.
Steve, I think Councilmember Shelton has a question for you.
Yeah. I don't need to interrupt, you can finish up.
I'm all but done. You know, I'd just say that for most people in this room, the 92 wells that we have in this, in our city, most people know not of them and go by them quite often. The activities we go through is during the drilling and completion operations, and afterwards, they pretty much are innocuous in the city. As to the water that is produced and is brought back, it is either recycled or again, it is injected, but no time is that water not contained by state standards. They're very stringent, and that is under Clean Water Act rules too.
So, based on your experience and the research that you've presented related to specifically the groundwater as it relates to that, that your point is that from your experience and those studies, that is about the?
Every state that deals with it, the federal government and the EPA, in regards to groundwater state, there has never been a groundwater, ever been contamination by a frac, by the fracking process in the United States after 48 years and 1.2 million wells.
So, I think Jeffrey's got that. Councilmember Shelton?
Yes, sir. You said you were a geologist, is that right?
Yes, right.
Okay. Is there a geologist on the COGCC board, or do they get input from geologists?
Well, you know, absolutely. They have geologists that are employed with them that go out to sites. I mean, they have combinations of, they have environmental engineers, environmental geologists, hydrologists, I mean, across the board. It is, and the experiences I've seen on both sides of issues, whether it's water, whether being on the environmental side or oil and gas, they're very evenly handed. They take their job very seriously, and the comments I've heard about the COGCC in regards having people on that committee that have some oil and gas experience, I'd expect that to have some experience, so they know how to deal with all these very intricate issues, and they do not side with oil and gas consistently. I've been, I've been on the environmental side and gone to them, watched those same people vote against companies for violations.
So, you have a different perspective on having members of oil and gas industry on the COGCC board? You think it's important?
You need people who are experienced in the day-to-day operations and what goes on out there. And I found them not to be one-sided, I found them to be very evenly-handed, or the governor who has the right to get rid of them, and our governor is not environmentally, he's a very, he doesn't play sides, he'd get rid of him and put somebody in who was better for that. And it's just, and I hear the chuckles, but we're talking about one issue in regards to the governor, but you see him quite often side on environmental issues very strongly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Tom Cave, and then we have Linda Reynolds. Linda, are you?
Yeah, we are by reference, in terms of reference, we have close to 68 people signed up, and we are close to, we're number 28. So, we're, we've got a long way to go. I think I'm going to ask folks, everybody has, we have a limited amount of time, there are a number of points, and so I'm going to ask you to be concise, to focus on sort of something that's different than what's been said before, a unique perspective or related to that. So, given that, we'd love to have everybody to do, to be able to speak, but it's going to be a challenge. So, Tom, please.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to make sure to start out with that the city council has the permission for me to sleep tonight. I understand that everybody here is saying, you're responsible, you're responsible for my health and safety. Excuse me, I am number one responsible for my health and safety, and then my extended family. So, sleep well tonight. But my point is here that, where's the problem? Back in April recently, this council held a very good study session, and many of the points came out very loud and clear during that session. The Colorado regulations on oil and gas industry are the strictest in the United States, and that was put into place in 2008, 2009 by Ken Salazar. Representative from the Oil and Gas Commission was drilled extensively, as does not see a problem. The representative from the Colorado Health Department does not see any measurable danger with air pollution. Finally, Mr. Jeff Wilson, general counsel for the Colorado Municipal League, says Broomfield's 1993 ordinance on drilling fits the happy medium between being an activist council and a do-nothing council. I'm not sure which way you guys want to go. I don't want you to be Broomfield, Boulder, that's for dang sure. As a manager, I know when someone asks me a question, there is a question behind that question. It is important to know their motivation. In this case, someone is asking the council to oppose a moratorium, and in fact, I've even heard ban fracking. So, what is their motivation? I know the answer to that, and I ask that you make sure you know the answer to that question before you make a decision and take them and give them credibility. I ask that you do not do a moratorium. If the 1993 ordinance needs some modification, and at least it needs to be reviewed, I have no argument with that. The question is, do we really need a moratorium? Can't we just make the changes in a very short time period and modify the ordinance to fit the needs of the people in the council? The reason for the motivation is they just want to ban fracking, period, okay? So, asking for a moratorium does not do you any good. So, if you see the need for that, do it quickly and move on. Don't be taking the time that Boulder County did, spending the 12 months fracking, doing studies, one right after another, and then getting, coming up with a de facto ban on fracking and drilling because of the regulations they put on council, on the drillers.
So, Tom, your point is, your point is that not to either put a moratorium or ban, but in fact, to make necessary modification to the ordinances and to move that, move that forward?
I believe, we don't have a long line of drillers out there that we need to say, hold for a minute here while we make up our mind. I mean, this is not well county. And there's only, there's only a maximum of about another 103 wells that can be drilled in Broomfield.
Okay. All right.
So, show me the problem.
Okay. Thank you. After Tom, Linda, Linda Reynolds, Anne Marie Cleary. Anne Marie, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. After Anne Marie, we have Hannah Shipley. After, after Anne Marie.
Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you for your time and for taking the time to hear the citizens of Broomfield. I get emotional about this because I'm a mother of twins. I'm from the east originally. I came here for a better life. I didn't come here knowing any of this, and I came to Broomfield because of what Broomfield stands for. Protection of the people, protection of the environment, importance of our children, life, parks and wrecks, the best parks and wreck system. And I believe that you guys want to do what's right by the people. I really do. That's why I came here. And I'm not going to talk about the groundwater contamination or the air, because you're going to get studies from all over the place, they're going to prove whatever the person doing the study wants to prove, even though I believe there are harmful effects. One thing we do know is there are documented studies proving exposure to fracking chemicals is detrimental to our health. We all know that. That's if you're exposed to it. So, my question, has nothing to do with anything that's even been said, is if we're looking to move these fracking sites closer to residences and people and large groups of children that need to function in a certain way in order to move throughout their day in a school environment, what do you have planned for the emergency operating procedures should something occur within 2,400 feet of a school housing 100 to 500 to almost 1,000 students at times? Do you have the operating equipment? Do you have the evacuation? Do you have procedures, like there's an intruder, and we have an intruder alert, or a gun, or a gun alert? Is this what we're going to do with our schools? So, that's my question, and I don't have facts on how it could be done. I just, I just want to know that we're going to be protected should these things occur.
Okay. So, the point, the point that you want council to take into consideration and to make sure that they have of a evacuation, emergency procedures as it relates particularly, as it relates to schools and proximity to schools, oil and gas, gas wells, right?
Correct. And I also wanted to make a point, council member that just walked away for a minute, he asked about specific well, if we can see a specific well, and about studies on a well. I think we here in Broomfield, we can actually have a study, because there's a school right now operating on an existing natural and gas well. It's about 350 feet from the school structure, maybe about 100 feet from the tennis courts and the fields where the children play. The school that I know, Aspen Creek K-8, located on 136th between Aspen Creek Street and Sheridan, somewhere between Main Street, that's kind of where that lies. There are existing wells owned by the company Noble there that are, that were fracked in the 90s. And I know for sure 1990 and possibly 1996, and you have students there. My, one of my daughters fell the first week of school, and she just scraped her arm. And I, and I said, how come nobody called me when she's sitting in the nurse's office? She said, do you know how many kids have asthma and problems in this school? That might be a place to start with a study. So, I'm, I'm posing that we really do the studies, and we really make sure that the place that we force our kids to go to school because we want to educate them, we want to teach them about environment, and we want to teach them about things that are important to us and as to why we came to Broomfield, I'm saying, wait that three years for those studies to be completed, and possibly do our own for them, for the kids, for yourselves, for the future of Broomfield. Thank you.
Okay. So, addition, in addition to the emergency plans about the additional studies and a, and a moratorium. So, I have Hannah Shipley. Hannah, are you here? Tom Hall? Okay. Are you, are you Hannah? Okay. Thank you. Thanks. I'm going to, we're going to keep moving forward with those who have actually signed up. So, Tom Hall, Tom, are you here? Tom, please. And then, Tom, Susan, Susan Idell or Dell, you're, you're after that. Please.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tom Hall, with the Green Party, 25-year resident of Broomfield, a native of Colorado. I had thought that what I wanted to say would come to me when I stood up. Still waiting. There's been so many things said here tonight. I worked for 20 years for Amoco Production Company. First 10 years in the Wattenberg Field, and then I finished my degree and went into a field in Oklahoma doing basically fracking. My work here in Colorado was production in the Wattenberg Field. I have some serious concerns about the integrity of an industry that is essentially operating outside the law, whether we have the laws or not. When we talk about all these laws, and then there's an exemption for this, and there's an exemption for that, pretty much do whatever they want. The one gentleman talked about produced water. Don't you know that goes into an injection well that's 10,000 feet deep? I personally drove a back truck in the 90s for Amoco Production Company, disposing of produced water. Some of it made it to some, the three injection wells that we had, some of it made it to two of the evaporation ponds that were operated at that time out in Eastern Weld County. The vast majority of it went onto county roads. It was much more profitable. I saw it, I actually did it, driving down the road, you open the valve on the side, you do the, you drop it on the road, it's dust abatement. I'm sorry, that's, that's the reality of it. Was it against the law? Yeah. Did we do it? Yeah. It's just, it's just incredible to me. I mean, I don't trust a permit issued by a state that's governed by an oil man. It's true, and we keep hearing the stuff about more studies. My fear is that the studies are going to be jaded by the power, the money, and the influence of the oil and gas industry, so that only the ones that favor them are going to get the air, are going to get the press.
Okay.
And also, is it just me, or is it, is if you're for fracking, do you get more time tonight? I'm just, it was just, I'm just noticing. Call me, and in closing, one final statement.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to be balanced in terms of time. I actually have, I actually have a clock that's running here. So, make your, make your point, please, and move on.
Final point. Call me a dreamer, but I would like to be attending a town hall meeting where we're talking about where are we going to put our wind turbine farm. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Susan, go ahead, Mayor.
I do feel compelled to make a somewhat lighthearted comment. The governor was laid off by the oil business in the 80s, so, so, I mean, let's be, let's be fair, he was laid off by the oil and gas business.
Okay. Susan Idell, Laura England, Laura England. And Jeannie, Jenny, you're next. Okay. After that, you're on deck.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, I'm Laura England. I live here in Broomfield, I've lived here, own a home for about 10 years. My concern about fracking is the amount of water used. We are in a drought. Colorado's in a drought. According to Doskin, who's the Colorado State University climatologist, said that Colorado's not seen a drought of this magnitude since the 1950s. And there are a couple of reports that have just recently come out in late April. One is Boulder's Western Resource Advocates released a report that said, quote, "The volume of water required annually to develop new oil and gas wells in the state could supply up to 79,000 Colorado households for a year based on average residential use." And another report put out last month by the Western Organization of Resource Councils says that, quote, "Water used in the process of hydraulic fracturing is reaching a crisis point in western states," and that the current level of water use for oil and gas production simply cannot be sustained. And I'm sorry, that was like a 34-page report. I don't remember the name of it, but I could easily get it for you. So, I know that the oil and gas industry claims that they can use a small portion of what the state regularly uses. However, the oil and gas industry consumption is not the same as residential, as explained by Robert LaRouche, who is the council spokesman of the Western Organization of Resource Councils. He said that water left over from fracking is often deposited into deep injection disposal wells and is not returned into the natural cycle, thereby effectively lessening aquifer supplies for everyone. So, I guess for me, coming from that angle, I would be, it's crazy to me to think that here I'm watering my lawn twice a week, and potentially all this water is going to go toward fracking, and I should have printed out the number, but I believe it was that newer, let's see my notes, while I could think, while I wasn't in front of you guys. So, the horizontal, the newer methods of extraction, I believe said that they were 40, they used 40% more water than the traditional. I can look up that number. Again, I do have that at home. I didn't print it out.
Okay. Okay.
So.
Thank you. So I think if we got the concern, it's, it's the amount of water that's used in the, in the fracking process, yes. So, and you are, yes, thank you. Jeannie.
Can you hear me?
Jenny, yes.
Hi, my name is Jenny Markarian. I live at 3654 Vestal Loop and I am with our Broomfield.
Linda Coons is next.
Thank you so much for listening to all of these wonderful residents this evening. In these past few months, I have gone from a busy mom, a small business owner, to a speech-writing, public educating activist. Believe me when I say it was nothing I ever dreamed of or hoped for. In this short time, I have seen differing opinions on the issues of hydraulic fracturing. There are those like me who completely oppose this form of extraction. There are those who think there is no danger in fracking and support it. I have also found that there are many who are still uneducated about this issue. And I feel they deserve the chance to get educated before the oil and gas industry moves into the neighborhoods of Broomfield. We know that as a council, you always try and act responsibly in light of what constraints are related to the law. In Broomfield, there are a lot of residents who are extremely concerned about the oil and gas in this area. If you feel reluctant to champion this cause in any way, let the citizens do it. This is an issue where all citizens of Broomfield need to voice their opinion. If this council can put backyard chickens on the ballot because of concerns of involving sights, smells, noise disturbances, as well as sustainability and health, I think it's beyond reasonable to include hydraulic fracturing on that ballot for all of those same reasons. One of the biggest environmental fights in America is increasingly happening at our country's most important political level, small towns, city councils and voters. We are the people who live here. We have to decide which is more important, big industry in our backyards or the health of the people and the environment. On behalf of all concerned residents in Broomfield, including all of those backyard chickens that may soon take up residence in Broomfield, I ask that as a council of, by and for the people, that you place this issue on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's, it's putting the issue on the ballot in November. Linda Coons, you're up. Eric Feigl, Feigl? Eric? If not Eric, then Brian McGuire, you're after that. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Coons. I live on Marble Court in Broomfield and I'm not with any organization. I believe in the precautionary principle that we should not introduce new chemicals or processes until they have been studied enough to show that they will not cause harm to people or the environment in the proposed use. The way fracking is being used now and the scale are new. It has not been studied enough to know how much damage it will cause to our health and environment. Hundreds of thousands of wells have been fracked and we already have nearly 100 in Broomfield. Some of those will leak and the result will be hazardous chemicals going into our groundwater, soil and air. The hydrocarbons that are released generate ground-level ozone, turning our near-rural quality air into urban quality. Ozone is very dangerous to the lungs, especially in children, causing asthma and other problems. My husband, a chemist, walks by such facilities frequently near his workplace in Hudson and can usually smell hydrocarbons being released from them. Anyone living, working or going to school nearby will be exposed to them on a regular basis. Some of the chemicals in the fracking fluids are carcinogens and endocrine disruptors and they use at least hundreds of thousands of gallons of it per well. These materials pass through the surface soil and groundwater. Very small leaks from a few of the wells could contaminate our groundwater with these chemicals. And understand that once the contamination is there, there is really no way to remove it, ever. We are putting our environment at significant risk by allowing these processes to be carried out here before there have been enough studies to know the full consequences and for what. There is already a glut of natural gas, so much that they now want to export it for use in other countries. We are putting our health and environment at great risk so that the energy companies can make money as fast as they can. We need to slow this down, at least until there is better information on the dangers. The gas and oil aren't going anywhere. We should slow down and wait a bit before letting it be done in our city on such a large scale. I urge the Broomfield City Council to place a moratorium on fracking in Broomfield. At least do not approve the wells that have been proposed in the North Park area. Let's not be the guinea pigs for these processes. If this goes ahead, it may be Broomfield that we see in the news dealing with the adverse effects that we should have anticipated and prevented. The prudent thing to do is to limit its use within our city limits until we have a better idea of the possible consequences for our health and our environment. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. So Brian, are you Brian? Eric, you're up, Eric. And Brian McGuire, you're, you're next. Brian, okay.
My name is Eric Feigl. I live at 1272 Clubhouse Drive in Broomfield. I am here tonight to speak in favor of drilling and getting all of the energy out of the ground that we possibly can. We have the ability in Broomfield and in Colorado to produce a lot of energy. And there's been a lot of concern about the chemicals that are in the ground. I am not, I am going into the ground, I am not an engineer, I am not a geologist, but I am a businessman. And whenever we attack a big project, we do a risk assessment. And that risk assessment balances the need to get the energy out of the ground, as an example in this case, against what the possible risks and what the mitigations are to those risks. I believe that we are smart, smart people. The oil and gas industry has been painted as an evil empire. They are not. I have worked with people in the oil and gas industry. I had the good fortune of touring one of the Kaufman rigs and understanding the process that is used for fracking, very deep wells, and also the water that is recycled in those wells. Most of the water, in fact, is recycled and filtered and used again. It is not wasted. Now, having said all of that, there are risks involved. Whenever you do something as a human being, there are risks. Driving over here tonight, there was a risk in getting here. I could have had an accident. I chose to come here anyway because it was an important meeting. So we need to understand the risk, we need to understand the benefits of what happens if we drill the wells and we get the revenue from those wells. And I think that we are perfectly capable of doing that. I would close by saying, I would, and these are words that I would, you probably would never have believed I would say, let's follow Boulder's lead and not have a moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there's favor of drilling, economic development issues, a belief in, in terms of being able to manage those risks. Thank you very much. The, are you Brian? Okay, Eric Reiken, Reiken, Reiken? You're on deck.
My name is Brian McGuire. My wife and I have recently moved to Broomfield just three years ago. We, we, what brought us to Colorado and to Broomfield was a new job, a job for me that was a byproduct of the boom in the oil and gas industry. I have over 25 years of experience in the petrochemical industry, a degree in industrial safety engineering and a certified safety professional, currently a director of health and safety and, and security for a midstream company in the oil and gas industry. For me, this is really an issue about jobs and about the economy. I am not here speaking on behalf of my company, but as a, as a resident here of Broomfield. The new drilling technology, commonly known as fracking with the directional boring, has impacted all facets of the oil and gas industry, has been a boon to the creation of jobs like mine and increased tax revenues for cities like Broomfield. While I consider myself knowledgeable, I did attend the April 16th study session and when I came away from that meeting was actually very impressed with the knowledge of the council members and its staff members and the issues on, and the legal issues surrounding fracking, the surrounding drilling and the permit issues and processes associated with that. I was very impressed with the knowledge of, of the staff and with council. I was impressed too to learn or surprised to learn, to some extent, being a new resident of Broomfield, that there's already 97 wells here in Broomfield. I, when I first met her out this issue, thought for some reason it was a new issue that's just come to light, but knowing that we've already successfully completed wells without incident and currently operating 97 wells without incident was an impressive record for me. And here earlier from a gentleman that said that we're 1.2 million wells in the country and none of those have contributed to groundwater contamination, which has been my experience in the industry as well. I have, I know of no incidents that have ever occurred where groundwater contamination and fracking have occurred. I thought it was interesting to know that Broomfield gets 100% of their groundwater from surface water, not from, or 100% of their drinking water from surface water, not groundwater. So even if there was the minute chance that fracking caused some groundwater contamination for us, that would not be an issue. We're not getting our drinking water from that, that subsurface groundwater anyway. There's almost a mile of rock anyway between the fracked fluids at the nearby shale formation in the existing groundwater under Broomfield. I thought it was interesting too that the, the current setbacks for the proposed wells anywhere over 2,400 feet away, almost two to four times greater than what are the currently COGCC rules, the new rules, which will take effect in August.
About 30 seconds.
Okay. I would like to say that, you know, if the council wants new rules on maybe passing new fees to, to compensate the city for loss of roadway and damage and infrastructure damage, I think that's a great idea. If they want to assess fees on the drillers for getting maybe our own safety inspector on board, I think that's a good idea. But I don't support a moratorium on drilling or fracking. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, and then David Taylor, you're, you're after Eric. David, are you here? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Eric Reiken. I'm a resident of Broomfield. I'm a father of three and my background is in geology. I have my doctorate in geology. I worked in the oil industry for several years in the late 70s to early 80s. And interestingly enough, some of my plays that I was involved with are 25,000-foot wells, so we did oil and gas extraction at, at pretty great depths. So I knew a little bit about the properties of rock and what happens when you pump a bunch of toxic chemicals down there and put them under extreme pressure. So just because a well is 10,000 feet, 20,000 feet, 30,000 feet, pick a number, doesn't mean that the fluids can't migrate to the surface and they often do. And there's really not a whole lot you can do to stop it. So I, I support a moratorium, I also support an outright ban on it, to get right down to it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you say that, that the liquids, the fluids come to the surface, is that through the, through the casing or through the tubing, the production tubing?
It can be both. Sometimes the casing, you know, they do their best to...
But it's not through the, the formation, it's through the, it's...
Often it could be through the formation, usually at shallower, usually at shallower depths.
7,600 feet.
Right. Usually deeper wells, it's, it's often more the casing failure.
Your concern would be over the, the actual production tubing and the, and the case, the surface case.
That, that would be a large part of it. It's also the, the whole cementing process too.
Okay, great. So, so make sure I caught that, that the concern is both the, through the, through the casing, but also through the formation itself, but primarily through the...
On shallow wells, but not 7,600 feet.
Yeah, okay, on shallow wells. As well as deep, well, we'll not argue the point, we'll just make sure that we capture that. Okay, please.
Good evening, my name is David Taylor. I also am a geologist and I'm a Broomfield...
Al Ramirez, sorry, excuse me, Al Ramirez, you're next.
Okay. I've been a Broomfield resident for 11 years and I'm happily raising my three sons here and really enjoy this community and I really appreciate the opportunity to come, talk to something that's near and dear to my heart and this important topic. We, we live in the Outlook neighborhood and a couple of weeks ago, we had a thunderstorm roll through, knocked out some power. And that really brought home to me the importance and how reliant we are on reliable, inexpensive energy. And I'm proud to be part of a community where some portion of that energy can be harnessed and accessed for our own citizens here. So as the Broomfield Enterprise recently pointed out, there are 97 wells within the Broomfield County. And most of these have been here since before Broomfield even was a county, right? Which is what, 12 years now, something like that? So I would venture a guess that most of those wells have been fracked and since more than a couple of years ago, most people probably were totally unaware when they go pick pumpkins at the pumpkin farm, there's a wellhead there, they don't recognize what it is that they're next to. I think an important thing to recognize is that, what that tells me is that the oil and gas industry has been a pretty good, quiet neighbor. However, I think that there are definitely a few things to address in terms of development within the community. Traffic and air quality associated with the construction processes, sure, those are things that we need to keep an eye on in terms of moving trucks safely around our community. Given all the work that's on, going on 36 right now in the Arista development, I think that's something that's near and dear to our hearts, of course. Property values, that's something that we need to take into account as well. But as a geologist, I want people to think about what's underneath your feet. In my neighborhood in the Outlook, part of the reason I've got some nice views of the mountains off to the west of us is because that was all mined for coal, right? This is not a new pristine area. This area of Broomfield has been seeing mineral extraction done for a long, long time. And it has done nothing but good things for our community. So please bear that in mind. And again, as is mentioned previously, we need to be, keep in mind the mineral value that is in the oil and gas in the groups of the people have. I won't get into some of my, my other contacts here, but in terms of recommendations for the, for the group tonight, I'd like for you to, again, think about what's underneath your feet when you're looking at not only the developments that's proposed, but new subdivisions, et cetera, that might be going into the area as well. I don't see that the oil and gas industry has moved into Broomfield. I see Broomfield has moved into the oil and gas industry. So please bear that in mind when you're looking at new subdivisions and water resources and other things that might be going on.
You're gonna need to wrap.
Okay, thank you. Toxicity is determined by concentration, not whether or not something exists, but in what quantities. And if you have questions about this sort of thing, I also suggest maybe go talk to your peers in Weld County. They've got lots and lots of experience with this sort of activity and I suggest that they may have some good pointers for you. So with that, thank you very much.
Support of oil and gas, address the concerns related to traffic, air quality, construction as, and, and sort of, and, and those issues. So we are moving quickly here. Don Engelstad, Don, are you here? Please come to the, to the mic. Gary Bros, Gary, you're next after that. So come on over. Go ahead, Don.
My name is Don Engelstad. I live at 16631 Las Briesas Drive in the Anthem Ranch subdivision in Broomfield. I want to thank you for the opportunity of being here and participating tonight. I speak to you this evening to urge you to declare a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in Broomfield. In a recent correspondence to all of you, I expressed my concerns regarding the lack of definitive information on possible adverse health effects that come from fracturing, fracking operations, as openly admitted by the technical representative from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment in the April study session. The use of excessive quantities of water at a time when we have been urged by Broomfield officials to conserve personal and community water usage, the general appropriateness, inappropriateness of oil and gas operations in close proximity to residential areas, the fact that these operations do not have to meet the requirements of either the Clean Air Act or the Clean Water Act, and based on my over 30 years as a practicing chemical engineer in the chemical industry, the fact that I have encountered many bad operators, to use the words that Mayor Quinn offered in the April study session. I believe that most of these issues have been comprehensively addressed by other concerned citizens this evening. However, at this particular moment, I would like to describe an encounter I had with a young family this past weekend. While discussing hydraulic fracturing with some neighbors at a garage sale, another shopper, who happened to be an environmental engineer working for a large company, joined our conversation. He claimed that he and his family, including two preschool children, were strongly considering the purchase of a home in Anthem Highlands. But when he heard us discussing the proximity of the impending sovereign drilling and fracking operation to the Highlands, he said that he and his wife would have to rethink their decision. He shared that his work experience is primarily in the permitting of his company's operations and he was convinced that volatile organic compounds, which in his opinion were essentially unregulated, could be causing health problems in children and he did not want to take that risk with his own kids. In conclusion, I again encourage you to declare a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in Broomfield. I recognize the fact that there are short-term economic benefits to Broomfield that come from fracking, but I would hope that during the moratorium period, these benefits would be weighed off against the costs of the concerns that I have mentioned. From this process, the best decision would be made for the citizens of Broomfield and perhaps that young family would move into Broomfield's Anthem Highlands after all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Support for, for the moratorium. Brad, you're, sorry, you're, Gary, you're next, and then Brad Clevenger? Brad Clevenger?
Yep, you're over here. Please.
Please. Mayor and council, first of all, I want to commend you guys for setting up this forum. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. So what I want to talk about, I'm resident of Broomfield, I've been an engineer all my life, most of my life, I've worked on spacecraft development programs, a lot of those have been environmental spacecraft. For the last 30 years, I've paid a great deal of attention to the climate science. So what I want to focus on tonight, most of everyone's comments tonight have been about the local impacts of fracking. And I understand, council, you feel to some degree constrained to focus on just the local impacts, but I'm gonna maintain to you tight that there's a global impact that you have to consider. And that global impact is fracking's contribution to global warming. Global warming is a political controversy in this country for reasons that are beyond me, because the science is absolutely overwhelming, that global warming is very real, and it's an incredibly serious problem. And over the next 10 years or so, there's gonna have to be dramatic reduction in our greenhouse gas emissions, if we have any hope of keeping the overall greenhouse gas content in the atmosphere at a controllable level. There is a doubt that's been manufactured about climate change, and that is very much the same mechanism used by many of the same parties that manufactured doubt about smoking tobacco throughout the latter half of the last century. So all of the models, all of the science that exists on global warming is consistent, and there's a variety of models that show a variety of scenarios, but they all agree that the content of greenhouse gases is very serious. We recently blew through 400 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Up until a couple of years ago, that was considered an absolute max, we cannot go beyond that point, otherwise we're in very dire straits. Now, we've gone right through it. Now the world governments have set 450 parts per million as the limit, we'll be there in 15 to 20 years. 450 parts per million means temperature increases that have a very real risk of causing climate calamity worldwide. So what does this mean about fracking? What's fracking's contributions to this? A previous speaker much earlier in the night mentioned methane contribution. Fracked wells, whether they're for natural gas or for oil, leak a significant amount of methane. Cities leak a significant amount of methane. That's why the gentleman comparing methane leakage at a well to methane leakage in a city, it's well-known science that both have a great deal of leaks. So the methane contribution is a very strong contributor to the greenhouse gas problem. The other one is the overall CO2 budget. We've already identified reserves of easily extracted oil and gas that dramatically exceed by five times the amount of carbon we can afford to put into the atmosphere. So there is no reason to use fracking-type operations to add more of the carbon, because the amount of reserves that are easily extracted without fracking are more than we can afford to burn.
Okay, so the concern is around the contribution of fracking in Broomfield related to climate change and to global warming, and as that, so...
I'll give a closing sentence, how about that?
Please do.
I encourage council to think and do a lot of research and look for the real science, peer-reviewed science, on this, because ultimately it drives and supersedes all of the local kind of concerns, which are real, but by far, that's a stronger concern.
Thank you. So Brad, and then James Weingart, Weingart? James Weingart, you're, okay, step up here, please, if you're James, please. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, I'm Brad Clevenger, 29-year resident of Broomfield. And what can I add to this that you haven't already heard? I can draw a parallel from another industry that I have direct knowledge of here in Broomfield, Rocky Flats. When I first came out of school, my first five years as an engineer at Rocky Flats, we used to have dosimeters which measured the allowable exposure of the various isotopes of radiation that were coming out. During my five years at Rocky Flats, the exposure level was dropped in half, twice, based on information that was coming in over 30 years of that plant. So my point here is, when you're looking at the different studies, you really need to take a look at the long-term effects, what's this study taking into account? Because these were brilliant nuclear physicists coming up with these numbers, and people were still getting cancer, same thing with beryllium dust. So to keep it really brief, look for competing interests in the studies, look for long-term information, and also look for cutting-edge changes in the technology. So the processes changing, like horizontal instead of vertical, somebody can say there's been no, there's nothing that's happened with, you know, we've been doing vertical for 30 years, what about horizontal? How long's that been? Somebody can say we've had no water contamination. Well, somebody would have said that about the allowable exposure level before they cut it in half and cut it in half again. And then they would have said, you know what, thousands of people have been exposed. So you really need to look at this kind of information when you're evaluating the studies. And it's a big task, and I actually would love to help, because, you know, we're putting a lot on you, I actually think it should come up for a vote as well. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And so I think the point there is looking at, in addition, looking at the long-term effects and the information. So you are, James?
Correct.
And John Wickham, John Wickham?
I'm here.
Okay, you're next. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is James Weingart. I'm a longtime resident of what is now considered Broomfield. I work for a company that has done work with NREL, National Renewable Energy Laboratory, to progress the national workforce standards for energy efficiency. One thing that concerns me is with the new, I'm sorry, with the chemicals that are going into the ground, one thing that's gonna be a concern and should be a concern to everybody in this room is basically radon levels in a house. I'm concerned also, when we tighten these houses, what's gonna happen inside the houses? And that's something that should be looked at further. And one reason that is a concern is because, for instance, you could have gas leak outside of a faucet. So, and that is not tested by most energy auditors, and is a big concern to me and maybe residents.
Okay. Thank you. So it's about the concern around radon levels, particularly inside houses as a result of...
Well, not radon levels, but possible ground admittance of gases.
Okay. Thank you. Please, state your name. John Wickham? Vincent? Vincent Straub, you're next. Vincent? Yep, come on down.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak in front of the city council here. Couple things, my name is John Wickham, I'm a resident of Broomfield, I'm a Colorado Navy native, I a degreed engineer from the University of Colorado, who have worked all over the Rockies for a large oil field service company. So I speak in support of the oil and gas industry and against any kind of moratorium. Couple things here from the points already stated, I just want to reiterate, somebody talked about the risk profile that any project entails right there. I can assure you, and my role in my job with this oil field service company, that is what we do, is to mitigate that risk for the best interests of our people and for the environment. The second thing is the concerns about well construction, leakage of fluids into surface waters and everything, and a lot of the industry efforts have gone into it, it's well documented, that proper well construction really minimizes those risks to pretty much insignificant, in my opinion, level. And the last thing that I, and, you know, and we can talk about the economics, and as the last point here, I want to talk about the economics. I'm surprised nobody has said anything here, I don't know what everybody else does here, I'm your neighbor, but I use natural gas to heat my home. And there's an economic issue right here that we always need to consider in that risk profile and in the determination of going forward and everything. And the whole thing right there is that if you're burning gas in your house to heat, chances are very good that gases here because of the frac job. So having said that, strongly support the oil and gas industry. And the last point I want to make is, if we, if there is a moratorium put in place, it's already been said by the governor that he will sue, and I asked the city council, is that the way we want to spend our money in litigation over something that is regulated already by the state? Thank you.
Thank you. Please. And then, let's see, so after, and you're Vincent, is that right?
Yes.
After Vincent, then we have Dottie Rouski, Dottie? You still here? Okay, you're up next, after.
Hello, my name is Vincent Straub, and I'm a resident of Broomfield in Highland Park. I had some prepared statements earlier, but a lot of the various points have been hit on, so I thought I'd just kind of hit on a couple of things that I did not see covered well tonight. And one being, a lot of people have talked about the environmental impact of this, but it seems to me that having the source, the source of the gas or the source of the oil closer to where we use it, there's a lot less chance for spills and such like that. It's just kind of common sense. Fellow right there before us also said, you know, using our own gas. And I think that leads me to my next point, which is the economics of it. The jobs, the gentleman earlier spoke about a lot of the homeless people, I mean, here's an opportunity to bring jobs to Broomfield, to increase our tax revenues and such. The fracking wells I've heard tonight, they spread out, they go out a mile or so in each direction. So if you believe, as I do, that oil and gas is inevitable for the next 40 or 50 years, it's part of our life. And though I know a lot of people have beliefs that we can go to solar and wind and all of these other things, the reality is, a large part of our energy consumption is gonna come from oil and gas. So why don't we have it as local as we can and reduce the environmental impacts that way? Use these horizontal wells that space the wells out further, there's a lot less surface impacts, impacts to the road and stuff, rather than putting them every few hundred feet, we're now putting them every couple of miles. I mean, this is advancements in technology, and people may be frightened or scared of it, but I think when you research all of the facts and the science, you will find that there is risk, but that it is manageable and that it is something that we really do need to consider. And the last thing is the people's property rights. I don't own my mineral rights under my house, but I respect the people that do, and I don't have the right to take that from them or anyone else. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Dottie? And then after Dottie, we have Heidi Streitman. Heidi, please, you're next, after Dottie.
Can you hear me?
All right.
Okay. I apologize, I've been gone for the last hour because I had a conflicting meeting, so I raced to that one, I raced back here, so stop me if it sounds like I'm totally repeating something that someone said while I was gone, hopefully not. Tonight, many citizens are talking to you about the health, environmental, and safety hazards of fracking to the community. I'm going to tell you about evidence that adds earthquakes to the growing list of fracking-related hazards alongside air pollution, tainted drinking water, and potentially outsized carbon emissions. In April 2012, the U.S. Geological Survey released a report stating that a remarkable increase of quakes in the U.S. mid-continent since 2001 is almost certainly the result of oil and gas production, specifically fracking. And if I can, if I may, there's a, I have a map of the area of the study, it's the Midwest...
You can leave that for him.
The middle section, what?
You can leave that, leave that for the council.
Of the country. To be clear, at this time, it doesn't appear that fracking itself, the process used to extract the gas, is the cause of these earthquakes, but rather, earthquakes have been linked to the injection of wastewater produced during fracking back into the ground in order to dispose of it. These are called injection disposal wells. Seismic activity in the Midwest started increasing about 12 years ago, but picked up significantly in the last few years. In 1970, the baseline for earthquakes in the Midwest, measuring above a 3.0, hovered at around 21 per year. That number began to rise in 2001. The number of 3.0-plus earthquakes rose from 29 in 2008, 50 in 2009, 87 in 2010, and in 2011 to a staggering 134. This is just the middle of our country. Though fracking does cause tiny tremors, the larger earthquakes that have been occurring more frequently have clustered around wastewater wells in Ohio, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Texas, and other neighboring states. Disposal of wastewater by pumping it deep into the ground is standard practice in many industries. But the recent surge of fracking activity using millions of gallons of water to crack rock deep in the ground and release natural gas has boosted the volume of wastewater being injected into, back into the ground. After a series of earthquakes in northeastern Ohio, including a 4.0 quake in Youngstown this past New Year's Eve, state regulators ordered natural gas drillers to suspend development of several deep water injection wastewater, deep injection wastewater wells and issued a new set of standards for frac water disposal.
Dottie, you have about 30 seconds.
Similar stories are in Arkansas, Oklahoma, and Texas, I'll try to summarize this. And least you think it can't happen here, nearly 50 years ago, scientists traced a series of earthquakes near Denver to huge injections of wastewater at the Rocky Mountain There are bills in California and several other states to have a moratorium or ban on fracking. Many countries in Europe have already banned fracking. I would like to see Broomfield be as courageous as citizens and councils, excuse me, in Boulder, Fort Collins, Longmont, Colorado Springs, in facing, courageous in the face of big corporations and to protect us. Once serious problems begin to occur, it may well be too late to reverse or prevent future damage. When we were kids, we were taught to stop, look, and listen before we crossed the street. These wise words of caution should also be used to direct us in the critical community decisions today. Stop, look, and listen. That is what we, your constituents, expect from our elected council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in particular, there is the impact on injection disposal wells and the relationship of that to earthquakes, and so Heidi, Heidi Streitman, you're up, and then, let's see, Nori Rothenberg? Nori Rothenberg? Katie Wilkerson? Matt Prance? Are you Katie Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay, so Katie's first, go ahead, go ahead, Heidi.
Okay, my name's Heidi Streitman, my family's been here since 1969, so we do remember the days of subsidence from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal injections. And also, we drank the tritium that was in the water from Rocky Flats, and there is a really super high incidence of cancer in my neighborhood, and I've always wondered, did it come from Rocky Flats? So I also am the daughter of a man who died from a brain tumor that was caused by exposure to dioxins, the agent orange that was used in Vietnam for a defoliant. So I've seen that we, you know, we don't know what the long-term effects of exposure to all these chemicals are. And even though we've had people with PhDs in geology, minds in education, as it relates to economic and social development, so I can't speak to geology, but, you know, we've been fracking for, what, 50 years? And there's no contamination? Geology happens slowly, right? 50 years is not even a sneeze in geologic time. So I'm not saying hallelujah, there's no pollution, I'm saying, maybe we do need to wait, maybe we need to do more studies. Have we looked at the United Nations, World Health Organization reports on health impact of fracking elsewhere? Is the CDC doing any studies? You know, we need to look at these things. The other issue I want to raise is that we may be polluting later, and Colorado sells water to other states, to neighboring states. Not only we do, we use our water for ourselves and our agriculture and our tourism industry, but we sell it for millions of dollars to neighboring states. If we contaminate that water and it winds up somewhere else, we will be fined for giving contaminated water elsewhere and selling it elsewhere. We will be held responsible, not Halliburton, not Noble Gas, they won't be the ones cleaning it up. Our tax dollars, our children's tax dollars, will be cleaning it up. And so there are economic considerations, aside from the glory of, thank God for jobs now, what is the long-term impact economically for us? It might... It might not be good, it may be that Halliburton is doing what it did during the war, sort of war profiteering, gathering up what money it can from the situation, and it's going to be down the road when we're paying for contaminated water, or our children are sick because they've been exposed to chemicals next to their schools. So, take your time finding out whether or not this is safe, because there's a hell of a lot at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you. And so you are, are you Katie?
Yeah.
Great, Katie, and then, let's see, Vena Miller? Vena? Vena Miller, that's Vince Miller, sorry, Vince Miller, are you here? No, what?
We're on fifty-eight.
And then, so it'd be Nanny Hoggett? Hoggett? Kate, you're up after, please, go ahead.
Okay. It was questioned earlier, what's a fair or safe percentage, one to three percent? My question back to you would be, what's a safe or good percentage of sick kids? What's a good percentage of property devaluation? They're really not fair questions. The question here is not risk assessment, it's do we have the empirical knowledge to make that risk assessment? Yes, there is risk in everything we do, the problem is, we don't know what the risk is at this point. Boulder County just lifted their moratorium yesterday, two of the three commissioners voted to bring in a phased approach. But their reasoning, I understand, this is a legal issue, this is as much a legal issue as it is anything else for city councils. But in her response, Deb Gardner's response was, we're going to test the waters, we're going to see if our regulations are appropriate, we're going to look and see what is a safe distance, if there is a safe distance. That does not seem like what I want from my city council. I'm looking to know what the safe distance is. If you're talking about putting something next to a school with five-year-olds, you better know what that safe distance is. And until we do, it doesn't make sense for our community, for our property values, for our health, for anything. We've got the ability to take some time. I'm not saying ban fracking, because I don't know that that's possible, but I am saying take a moratorium, because we have, the more small communities that stand up to the federal government, to the state government, to all these people that are pushing this down upon the individual house that is next to that well, the stronger that we have of a voice. You are our voice. You are the ones that are going to send it back up to the state to say, you know what? Pass that clean, close that clean air gap, close that clean water gap. That's not going to come from the industry or the government, it's coming from, or the federal government, it's coming from the individual, from the local government. You are the voice to make this happen and to make it happen the right way. Not, it's not going to come from Hickenlooper or Obama, it's going to come from you. And so that's what I'm asking for, a moratorium. They're doing things to change the way fracking is done as we speak. They're learning how to clean the water that they're coming out. Why not wait until we can make that a mandatory piece of our regulations in Broomfield? You can't come and frac unless you turn all of that water back into clean water and it can go back into the aqua four. We can't do that today, but we might be able to in three years. The gas, oil and gas industry wants to make this as safe as we do, but if we're the guinea pigs, we're the ones that are going to pay the price. So the moratorium just gives us that chance for science to catch up to the science.
Okay. So, moratorium, chance to catch up in terms of the science, to get more information about the safe, safety, air, water, and those types of things. Please, you're next, and then after Nanny, Chris Barrington? Chris, are you still here? Chris, okay, go ahead, Nanny.
I'm Nancy Howton, I live--
Excuse me, Nancy, couldn't understand the writing.
I know, my writing's not so good. I live on 3229 Trafford Drive, and I'm another geologist. I've worked in the petroleum industry for about thirty years, a little bit more, and I am very concerned about fracking. One of my concerns is, in having looked at a map on the Colorado Oil and Gas website, we, in Anthem Highlands and the general area, live in a plugged and abandoned oil field already anyway. And there are many vertical wells that have been cemented and abandoned, and we're going to be drilling, I assume, if sovereign wants to drill eleven wells, it's probably kind of like a wagon wheel. And I imagine some of those well traces will be coming under our property. And are they going to know where the wells are? Are they going to, when they frac, are they going to crack the cement? And like the other gentleman, the PhD in geology mentioned, that you can have fluids leak up? Well, the reason they've cemented those wells is so fluids would not leak up to the surface. And if you crack the cement by the nearby fracking, you're going to have things leaking up. And it just seems that, we're just being too hasty with this, and I am in favor of a moratorium, and I think it just makes sense to make sure there are the proper kinds of regulations, it's not just to buy time, but to make sure that when wells are being drilled and fracked, that we aren't being, that we're not going to find out, as everyone's already mentioned, that our children are becoming ill, that we're sick, that we develop more health problems than we may already have. And I just think that, it just, I think everyone's made a lot of good points, and I just think a moratorium should be considered in order for us to proceed safely in the future.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Good evening.
And then after Chris, Jack Fudge? Jack, you here? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for holding this meeting to give both sides an ability to voice both concerns and facts, to hopefully ease some of the fears that have had on safe development of oil and gas leases in the Broomfield County. I'm a landowner and a resident in Broomfield, I live up on Federal Boulevard and have some land there. I have two small children, I own a water well that's perforated nine-hundred-and-fifty foot, and that is operational on my residence right now. And I also live within a couple hundred yards of an existing oil and gas lease that's producing. I'm a second-generation petroleum engineer, and have personally designed and implemented over a thousand fracture stimulations in my fifteen-year career to date. I would never jeopardize my family's health, and if I thought there was any chance their health was in jeopardy, I would bring you the facts here tonight, and I would tell you about everything that I have to know in order to shut it down. I consider myself an expert in the field of hydraulic fracturing, and welcome any questions you guys may have, in order to hopefully ease your mind as well. I've spent my entire life in this industry, living on locations and platforms, sometimes months at a time, and consider myself an extremely healthy person. My father has also been in this industry for forty years, doing the same kind of work, and he's also an extremely healthy person. I have no adverse health effects from living on locations, drilling wells, fracking wells, or being anywhere around the equipment, day in, day out, twenty-four seven. I do, however, have a responsibility to speak tonight to hopefully ease everybody's mind in order to hopefully develop the minerals safely and economically in this area. Let's talk about the track record. Every aspect of the frac process is monitored by numerous individuals at surface, as well as multiple federal, state, and local officials. The formations are separated by thousands of feet of impermeable rock barriers, well below any usable water sources. The EPA, the groundwater protection agency, the Interstate Oil and Gas Compact Commission, have published multiple reports studying the effects of hydraulic fracturing through these barriers, and have concluded that zero percent chance that these frags can grow to a shallow water source. The EPA has even testified to the Senate that there has never been a case of a frac affecting a water supply, and there is a one-in-two-hundred-million percent, two-one-in-two-hundred-million chance of it ever happening. As you have stated numerous times tonight, the COGCC is one of the strictest in the country. I've spent hundreds of hours discussing my operations, as well as offset operations, to minimize the impacts to both the environment and to the general public. I was involved in implementation of green completions, low bleed, no-bleed equipment, water handling operations, and monitoring programs that have become some of the standards used today by, in order to minimize environmental and health impacts to our community.
Chris, sorry to interrupt, you have thirty seconds.
Okay. I understand the fears of the unknown, however, that is not an excuse to ignore the facts. The fact is, that no frags have ever performed in this past sixty-five years, millions of stimulations have ever actually penetrated any water. There's a saying, when the law is against you, you argue the facts; when the facts are against you, you argue the law; when the facts and the law are against you, well, you just argue. And I think we've seen that here tonight. I trust the council will take a look at the facts and will make the right decision to not infringe upon the mineral owner's rights to develop the assets that have been in their families, in some cases, for many generations.
Thank you. So Jack Fudge, Sue? Sue?
You know, let me just make a comment, that we are at the hard stop, but we've only got four more names, and so I assume council would agree that people who've been here for three hours with us should have the right to speak, so we'll go ahead and take the last four.
So, sorry, Mayor, there's actually five, including Jack, so there's five. And so those are the five remaining, so Jack? Sue? Sue, are you here?
I'm here, but I will be glad not to speak so that y'all can go home.
Okay, Sue's--
Thank you, Sue.
Alan White? Alan White? Stephanie Noliat? Noliat?
Stefan.
Okay, you're, Stefan, please. Go ahead, sir, Jack.
Hi, my name's Jack Fudge, I live in Anthem Highlands, and I've kind of had to take a look at fracturing because of the nearby impact at North Park. My background is, I did work as a fracture for Halliburton when I was in college, and I drove things like hydrochloric acid trucks to do their fracturing. It was a different time, EPA stuff was not really a consideration when I was on the job. So I'm hopeful that things are a lot better now, but the things that I, I've tried to educate myself, probably like you're trying to educate yourself, on what the dangers are. And I think that what has come to, what I've come to a conclusion is, is there's a lot of different stories, you can find probably whatever you want to say, whether it's good or bad. I believe the thing that bothers me the most from the information that I've uncovered is that the oil and gas industry is not held to the Clean Air Act or the Clean Water Act. There is also, as I understand, an EPA requirement for a change to the Clean Air Act that will be implemented phased in 2015. And the Clean Water Act, they're supposed to come out with a report, I believe, the start of 2014. So, I would suggest that we do put a moratorium on these fractures in North Park until those studies come out or are implemented. If we do go ahead and allow it to happen, it seems like we should go ahead and force the oil companies to comply with the 2015 Clean Air Act. So, that's kind of my perspective on the whole thing, and I guess the one last point that I'd like to make is that there's lots of counties, states, and cities that are putting moratoriums on this. There's a lot of smart people that have looked at this, for places like a whole state in New York to ban it twice, or put a moratorium on it twice. You've got to stop and think that there is something that needs to be done to make everybody feel safe with this. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. And so, just so, you're in favor of a moratorium, but if not, then to ensure that the Clean Air Act, that would go in, those regulations that go in 2015 would be put in earlier in this case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Stefan, and then Scott Milligan? Scott Milligan? Is it Scott Milligan, sir? You, okay, you're down, down here, please.
Hi, my name is Stefan Bia, and I'm a resident of Broomfield, I moved here about two years ago. Sorry, my English is not perfect, even twenty years in the U.S., I come from France, where we could talk about nuclear all day long over there, which is a different story. I'm the CEO of an electronic company, and two years ago, I had a choice to open the company anywhere in the United States. I picked this area because it's one of the best places in the country. Don't be, you know, I've been everywhere, in the south, in the north, in the east, California, and all that, it's the best place in the country here, and I truly believe that. The truth is, the question is all about money, right? We want the gas for the money, and I understand that, I want the money too, that's why I'm a business owner, that's why I'm the CEO, I want money too. But, where do you get your most money? Are you going to get your most money from the ground, or you get your most money from being on the outskirts of Denver, which is a growing city, which a lot of people like, which has a lot to offer, by selling this high-tech business, biochemistry business research, new energy research, a company like me that wants to move here, with paying a lot of taxes on expensive houses in Wildgrass, where I live with a lot of other people, and that's prime location. You have the view, you have, you have, close to Denver, you have businesses, you have good school, and that's a great place. So the question is, there's a controversy, and I don't think it's just wacko people, I mean, obviously, there is some chemical engineers, there's some intelligent people here that are not for fracking. Now, there's some very good, smart people that are for fracking. So the truth is, we can make money with this, is Broomfield the best place for it? I am sure there's gas and oil on the My Island City, you know, the My Island Stadium, where the Bronco plays. Is there more money to make on Sunday than there is to pump the gas underneath the stadium? That's right, that's why we're not pumping gas over there. So the question I'm asking you is, do you want to take the risk to jeopardize that area, which is prime location, and just pump the money and the gas and the controversies that goes with it, so people will move somewhere else? And if sometime we find out that, you know what, this was not a good idea, then we would have lost a beautiful place, that high potential to make, you know, a little Silicon Valley, or a little, basically, high-tech industry, where it's nice to live and we have a lot of revenues, because we wanted to get that gas out. I'm for fracking, but not, don't do it in a high-density, high-power city like Broomfield. For the same reason, we all like to eat pigs and roast pigs, but we don't want pig farms in Broomfield. And that makes money, and all that. It's great, put them in Nebraska, in North Dakota, the people in North Dakota have nothing to lose. I'm sorry to say, I lived there for fifteen years, and I can tell you, there's nothing to lose there, because there's nobody, and there's nothing to see and to do. So you can ruin the place, make the money you can from gas and from oil--
So you're in support of fracking, just not in high-density areas in Broomfield?
Absolutely, not in a high-density, high-value area like Broomfield, this is the edge of Denver, that's where the next people that lived in Denver and all that are going to leave. You get your money from taxes, from paying seven to ten thousand dollar taxes per quarter of an acre, that's not a bad revenue per year.
Okay, thank you. So Scott Milligan, and then last, I misread, so it's Alan White, Alan White should come on over here--
You mentioned Vince Miller's name. I was supposed to put like Peyton Manning--
Vince Miller, I didn't see him.
--back up, taking me and calling it a day.
Okay, are you Vince Miller?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then come on down here, sorry, I was, I couldn't read that. So Vince, and Alan, and Scott, and then we are going to wrap this, please.
Great, my name's Scott Millington, I'm a resident of Broomfield, I've been here for the last seven years, and really love and enjoy this place. I'm a father of three, and a husband as well, and I'm like the gentleman that talked earlier, if I knew anything, and some of the, from the history, if there have been problems that are documented and true, I would be definitely against this technology that's coming on. But I am for the development of our natural resources. The COGC has a lot of smart people, have established rules and guidelines that the industries have to follow to safeguard the people of the state and the nation. Over ten thousand wells have been fracked north of Denver, and there are not claims of, or a lot of examples of negative connotations that have occurred to people with these efforts. So I want to cut this short, and I know we've had a lot of things for, but I'm for developing our natural resources to continue making Colorado and the U.S. strong.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. And you are, you're Vince?
I'm Vince Miller, yes.
Okay, I--
Apparently I need--
Or Vena, sorry, I can't read the writing, sorry.
I recently retired to Broomfield from Oklahoma, where I worked for Phillips Petroleum Company as a geophysicist, and have taught undergraduate and graduate level meteorology for the last number of years. And boy, it's where to start, because I've heard so much misinformation and misleading statements made already, so I've just, I'm going to address a few of those.
Why don't you speak from your perspective about--
Well, my perspective is, is that what we hear should be true. And people say that the governor said he's going to, the state is going to sue, the governor, in fact, has said the state is not going to sue Longmont. COGA, which is the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, has in fact sued Longmont, but the COGA is an industry organization, they represent the industry. Somebody mentioned the Colorado Department of Public Health survey on December 5th, so I looked it up, it's nice to have these things with you. And the statement says that that is merely a snapshot in time, at this time only, in one well pad, and it's a limited data set. And that in fact, the current state of the science is unable to estimate the potential risks due to multiple--
risks due to multiple chemicals at the same time, which in fact may be higher. NOAA, which is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, issued a report in January of this year saying that 55% of the compounds that lead to the development of ozone and Erie in fact come from oil and gas wells. People talked about horizontal fracking being around for 60-plus years, which is true. But the technology for the horizontal hydrologic fracking has only been around for a decade. And in fact, few, if any, of the wells that are currently operating in the city and county of Broomfield were horizontally hydrologically fracked, and you're comparing apples and oranges. As a meteorologist, I love looking at the sky and visibility. And today was an excellent example, look to the north, look to the west, there's a milky haze in the atmosphere. And a lot of times, there is no scientific meteorological science reason that this haze is here, people say, oh yeah, it comes from Denver, and there is a Denver brown cloud. But a lot of times, there is no reason for it. And then I learned there's almost 20,000 wells in Weld County, now the light goes off. Those wells, many of them are putting out tons of VOCs every year. Add sunlight to that, and you get ozone, which is probably why the American Lung Association and their 2013 State of the Air for Colorado that just came out a couple weeks ago, gave Ds and Fs for ozone to a bunch of front-range counties.
In 30 seconds, fit.
Blairmer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The Air Quality Control Commission meeting I attended last week, the CEO of COGA, the industry group, implored the commission, as they advocate perhaps new rules and regulations in the industry, she implored that they keep in mind the health of the industry, that's the apex of what they're supposed to do. She didn't mention at all the public health of the citizens who breathe the air that the industry is using as a dumping ground. The COGCC, okay, very quickly, the COGCC, which is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, is responsible, allegedly, for keeping our public health in mind, but it's not part of their main mission statement. Their main mission statement basically says that they exist to help grease the wheels of the industry. And the setback rules are a good example, which was greatly fought by the industry. The new setback rules, the numbers have nothing to do with any type of public health or scientific, there's no public health or scientific reasoning behind those rules, zero. Last thing I have to say, there's a very interesting article in Bloomberg Businessweek about fracking in Colorado. Very interesting.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to summarize this.
Okay, I'll summarize it. The last thing they say is that once a gas and oil company gets into your area, they own you, they own the hospital, they own the commissioners, they own your area, and they will do what they want. A question I have for all the council people, when you take your vote on the moratorium, is your vote going to show that the people own you or that the industry owns you?
Okay. Alan, last comment for this evening, just to note that what we did is put a priority on those Broomfield residents, there are some of you who had signed up, a number of you, and that based on the time that was available, we put a priority on Broomfield residents. Last comment tonight, please, Alan.
My name's Alan Curtis, I'm a Broomfield resident, I'm also a partner at White and Jankowski in Denver, we're a water law firm, and so you know where I'm coming from, we're the law firm that successfully sued the Colorado state engineer to require him to issue permits to oil and gas wells. That being said, I will tell you based on my experience that the majority of hydraulic fracturing doesn't create an impact if it's done right. With that being said, it is not true that there have been no instances of water impacts or contamination, and we have an example right here in the state, if you go on the COGCC's website, in Werfino County, Petroglyph Operating Company impacted water supplies down there, they destroyed farms and wildlife and fish aquaculture, and were required by COGCC to mitigate some of those impacts, and to date, that situation hasn't been corrected. So mistakes are made. And what I want to say in response to the gentleman earlier that said, there's a risk here, and he used the analogy of driving a car, I have to have insurance on my car, and that means when a mistake happens, somebody else isn't stuck with the bill for my mistake. And Colorado law does not require any kind of a bond other than to plug and abandon a well when they're done. And that's been reduced to the point where it's several thousand dollars, and the state's gonna get stuck with that bill when these companies leave the state. And what I'm suggesting to you is rather than a moratorium, you put some restrictions on here that require them to post a bond, so that when things do go wrong, people aren't stuck with the results of that mistake. In addition, I understand these formations in some cases are 10,000 or 25,000 feet deep, but if the casing leaks, that's how the groundwater gets contaminated, and that's a recognized issue. What you can do there is upgrade the current groundwater monitoring regulations, which don't take into account the specific alluvial travel of water in a particular area. That's something you could do, that will allow you to catch those groundwater incursions and deal with them before they're spread all over the city. Baseline testing is something else that the city could look at, so that they know what the groundwater looks like before these impacts begin, and that will allow you to trace that back to the operator if they're causing that problem. And finally, I would suggest that as part of that bonding or cost process, the city look into hiring additional inspectors. There were attempts at the legislature this year to get additional inspectors, we've had an explosion of oil and gas growth in this state over the last three or four years, and the inspection levels have not kept up with that. And that's something that will ensure that the casing and the bonding and the groundwater monitoring is done properly and covered in real time, so that people don't find out later that they've got a problem, that it's too late, or they don't have the money to fix.
Okay, so four things, posting bond, so for when things go wrong, upgrade current groundwater monitoring, increase baseline testing, and increasing the number of inspectors, did I get that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it over, thank you all for having the patience and time and respecting the, each other in this process, I know that many of you have such serious and significant differences of opinion about this, I think you did very well this evening, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Quinn for some closing comments.
Well, I'll just reiterate Jonathan's, you know, once again, it never ceases to impress me how well Broomfield people debate issues, I mean, I appreciate your decorum tonight, I appreciate both sides, the respect everybody showed each other, and I thank you very much. As I said, there's gonna be a study session sometime in June, which is, those who attended the last one know that we don't take comments, which was the purpose of tonight. And I will just close out by asking any member of council, if any member of council wants to make any comments before we close, otherwise we'll just, we'll appreciate your... What's that? I already mentioned where Greg was at. I will reiterate that the mayor pro tem, who's Ward Four representative, is very interested in what the citizens' comments are, but as he said, his commitment tonight was 18 years in the making, his daughter's graduating from high school, and I think there's not a person here that wouldn't agree that he should be with his daughter in high school, graduating from high school, so.
Yeah, notice is, here, and I will be valued from him. That's fair.